Thank you Cindy. So the very first thing we're going to do is we have a supplemental to the agenda as you're aware, and so we're going to take it part and part of the regular agenda first. Dave Atkinson is rather busy right now with the river fire doing stellar job by the way Dave, I want to thank you for that. And then we'll continue on with the agenda as normal, pretty much, I think. So with that, we'll start off with item 3A. I have that right? And yeah. And so this is our chipper program but put in place by a way of alternative sentencing with probation. So Dave's going to kick it off and we have Marshall here to.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board, Dave Atkinson, Assistant Director of Emergency Services. As your board is aware, a no-cost, low-cost residential chipper program has been available in Placer County for many years. The program as we know it today is being led by Placer Resource Conservation District and is supported by various grants and at times jail inmate crews. The RCD and county staff across multiple departments have been working on ways to expand this important service that our residents have come to rely on. Part of that effort involves a proposed partnership with the county probation department. The item before the board this morning is one that seeks your approval for this partnership and the associated financial support. With me this morning is Sarah Jones, Executive Director of the Placer RCD, and Marshall Hopper, our Chief Probation Officer. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Jones for the RCD.
Thanks.
Thank you Chair Wagen and Supervisors for your attention to this matter this morning. I'm going to give you a brief background of the chipper program and where we are today. As you know, it's a critical community resource that's been in place for over a decade, offering low-cost chipper services to Placer County residents to incentivize the completion of defensible space on private property. The program demand is high. Over the last several years, we've seen a real spike in demand, which is great. People are getting the work done that's critical for the safety of our property and residents in Placer County. In 2018, 1,500 services were completed. And then in 2019, it jumped up to over 2,500. So that's over a 70% increase in demand for services and completion of those services. At that time, we were utilizing the Placer County inmate crews. We had two to three crews running at a time for up to six days a week. So fast forward to March of 2020, as you know, all of our realities changed drastically. At that point, we lost access to our inmate crews, so we no longer had labor for the chipper program. So at that point, we suspended the program. There was a lot of uncertainty. The program was suspended for seven months, but during that time, we worked with our grantors, we amended the budget, and we decided to go ahead and hire an in-house chipper crew, which is the first time we'd ever done that in the history of the program. So we do have a chipper crew out there working 40 hours a week now to get caught up. By the time the program resumed in late 2020, there were over 400 requests for service. So even though the program was suspended, people continued to request those services and we honored that. And the waitlist was really long. So by the time that we resumed that program, the backlog was very large. So we're currently trying to get through that backlog. We've done a really good job. We're down to about 200 on the waitlist, but even so, people are waiting up to three months for us to come and give them that service. That's so critical. So I'm here today to ask for your support in this work program that we've been working with to collaborate with probation and County CEO's office and OES on this. So appreciate your support and I'm going to pass it off to Marshall. If you have any questions on the chipper program, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Do the board members have questions at this time? I see none. Thanks.
Good morning, members of the board. Marshall Hopper, your Chief Probation Officer. It's a pleasure to be here today. And I'd like to start off real quick by thanking you for your support with this program over the years. Not only the support that you've given us, Todd, thank you for your support as well, but also the support of our DA. The reason we're able to modify our current adult work release program is because of the balanced approach that's being brought to our system. Years ago, we had individual work release participants assigned to sites. The flexibility that's given to us now through sentencing has allowed our department to manage that in a different manner. And that is basically in the short version is how we created and brought back this mobile crew concept. We believe the mobile crew concept benefits the community. We have probation officers out there with crews doing various sites ranging from Roseville to Tahoe, graffiti cleanup, trash cleanup, shoveling bark, doing various jobs. And I think at this point, after the change occurred, we have demonstrated the ability to get these participants here because these aren't inmates. They go home at night. And that was always one of our challenges is how are we going to get them there? But given the ability to make that adjustment over the last several months, we've got a process in place to get inmates there. And we are ready to move forward and take on this new endeavor with the chipper program. A program that's needed for our community. Obviously, we're backed up 200 jobs. We believe that a partnership with RCD and our alternative sentencing programs will do two things. It'll expand our programs. It'll provide opportunities for these participants to give back to the community while at the same time allow different opportunities for our probation officers to get out there and provide for public safety in our community. So again, thank you for your support. And with your blessing today, we are ready to move forward with this chipper program.
Thanks, Marshall.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments by board? Jim?
Marshall and Sarah, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. We get a lot of calls from constituents wondering about how the chipper program's going. This is certainly an enhancement and I'm proud to support it. So thank you for your hard work. I want to thank the district attorney as well for his role in moving this forward.
Cindy?
I want to dito that as well. I really appreciate it. And I had one question. How long is the typical chipping crew onsite for one project? I know it varies depending on the size of the pile and debris.
So typically in the past, the jobs have been about an hour or less. With the suspension of the program, I think a lot of the piles were added to over a series of months. The piles became more compacted. And the piles that we're seeing are much larger, so anywhere from like four hours. Some jobs have taken more than a day. When we do an HOA job, for instance, we're staged up in Truckee this week. It's like a three-day job. So that's a series of residents in a row and it's an HOA. Even like a month ago, we were able to complete about 200 jobs in about four days. But that's because they're lined up and those are some of the smaller jobs. So it really does vary, but in general, we're seeing an increase in the size of piles.
Well, we're thankful for that because people are doing their defensible space and taking this all very seriously. And I so appreciate the innovation here and the commitment to move forward and expand the chipping program. Thank you.
And I'll just add before I open up to the public that over the years, I've been involved here in the county. I've always been impressed. Life isn't perfect, but there's always been a lot of entrepreneurialism and innovation by our staff and our partners. So I want to thank the two of you. Here we have a circumstance where COVID completely unseen and had a huge impact on our array of our services. But we've long been developing a better system of criminal justice here in Placer County. And Marshall, you've been a key of that. And again, I want to also echo thanks to Morgan at District Attorney's Office. So thanks to you both. And I'll open it up to the public this time for any comments or questions.
Okay, we have to approve the program essentially, but also adopt a budget amendment of $175,000. So it's a pleasure with the board.
Motion approved.
Motion Home Second, Gustafson. We need a roll call vote for the budget amendment.
Gore?
Hi.
Holmes?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Gustafson?
Hi.
Yes. Okay, so. Three which? Now we're going to take a part of the supplemental. So to be clear to all of us and the public, we're going to receive an operational update on the fire, both from Chief Brian Estes and Devon Bell, our sheriff, but that's going to be about or somewhat after 11 o'clock. But now we will take up a resolution to ratify a proclamation of local emergency as a result of the river fire. So Dave?
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dave Atkinson, Senior Assistant Director of Emergency Services. And I'm here this morning to ask your board's consideration of a resolution to ratify a proclamation of local emergency in Placer County for the impacts stemming from the river fire. Contemporary emergency management breaks the disaster cycle into four phases. In previous board presentations, and actually just now, we talked a little bit about preparedness and mitigation. And it's always great how much support that we have for those efforts here in the county. As you mentioned, you'll be getting an operational update a little later in the morning from our first responders, and that will take care of the response phase. And really, my focus of my presentation to you this morning is about the recovery phase and the steps that are before us in order to move along that very long road to recovery for our community. As your board is aware, the river fire started on August 4, 2021 at about 2:00 PM, adjacent to the Bear River just southwest of Colfax. As staff monitored reports from the field, it became clear that the fire would extend beyond initial attack. It was with this understanding and our local knowledge of the area that OES made the decision to activate the Emergency Operations Center. OES also deployed a representative to the incident command post to enhance communication and coordination with the response efforts. Frequent calls were held with Nevada County OES to ensure necessary support was provided to the community irrespective of a dotted line on a map that separates the counties. The EOC, according to request, to provide the responders with additional resources to aid their efforts. The support included buses to help with evacuations and of course, shelter for those misplaced and had no place to stay for the night. 211 was engaged with the help of HHS to provide information and provide some relief to our 911 system as information requests continue to flow in. Other actions on Wednesday evening included bringing in a CalOES representative to the Emergency Operations Center, which provided quick access to state resources such as shelter supplies, which were brought in to bolster what American Red Cross was already able to provide at our shelter off of Richardson Drive. Having this representative in the EOC also streamlined the process for responding to CalOES calls for additional information that were being requested to support the request for immediate federal assistance in the form of what's called a Fire Management Assistance Grant. These efforts proved to be successful. And just after midnight on Wednesday, we got the word that our FMAG had been approved. By Thursday morning, the EOC was staffed and supported by PIO, Information Technology, Health and Human Services, Public Works CEO staff, and of course, the entire OES team. Given the high likelihood that homes would be impacted, the EOC leaned forward in acquiring data that would be needed to support requests for state and possibly federal assistance. After evaluating the information available regarding the extent of the fire and the knowing that the public infrastructure and other private property that was going to be within the impact zone, I made the recommendation to our CEO that in his capacity as the Placer County Director of Emergency Services, that he proclaim a local emergency in accordance with county code. Later that evening, thanks to that effort and the effort, similar efforts of Nevada County, the state also proclaimed a local emergency, which brought additional state resources and probably most importantly, at least the chance of additional disaster assistance for recovery. As the incident stabilized, the close coordination with the Unified Command managing the incident allowed the EOC to link CAL FIRE damage assessment teams with our Building Department and Environmental Health to speed up in the collection assessment of impact data for the homes that have been affected. And from this work, I'm sad to report that we believe there's 36 homes that have been destroyed and another five damaged. Additional information, of course, is still coming in. So that's a little bit preliminary. Other work included assisting in getting representatives from private utilities out to the impact area. This sped up our repopulation process. And just shy of a week after the river fires started, I'm pleased to report that the reentry of residents in the area within the fire perimeter has begun. That actually started at 1:00 PM yesterday. In partnership with Health and Human Services and Colfax Elementary School, a reentry center was established as a central location where those returning to their properties can get information about the status of their homes, receive some protective gear such as masks and gloves, also a chance to get some emotional support from our chaplain's court. And we also provided information packets about hazards and some of the first steps that they'll need to be taking as they start their road to recovery. The county developed and has continued to maintain a river fire webpage to facilitate quick access to authoritative information sources related to the fire. In addition to coordinating the activities with first responders, the EOC started preparing for and supporting future recovery efforts. This included the early development of mapping and damage valuation tools that put us into position to justify possible future disaster assistance. And that efforts have paid off. We actually have a meeting with CalOES staff tomorrow morning to go through our initial submission and then to validate that out in the field. For those who have lost their homes, staff from Nevada and Placer have organized what we're going to call a Local Assistance Center. I'm pleased to report that Colfax Elementary School has agreed to be the host of this facility, and it will be open on Friday and Saturday of this week. It will be there to provide easy access for our residents to resources that they will need in the weeks and months ahead. This will be what we call a one-stop shop with in-person access to state and local agencies such as DMV, Department of Insurance. We'll also have staff on hand from both counties to answer questions to guide survivors through the process of rebuilding and how they can access other support services. We are also reaching out to community-based organizations to offer them an opportunity to participate and enhance the offerings that will be available at the Local Assistance Center. It is important to remember that recovery extends beyond simply repairing damaged structures. It also includes the restoration of services critical to the physical, emotional, and financial well-being of the residents, as well as the restoration and strengthening of key systems and resources that are critical to the vitality and long-term sustainability of our community. Using the recovery framework as our guide, we will be bringing together a multidisciplinary team from across county government, the city of Colfax, and Nevada County. As I mentioned, we're also reaching out to community-based organizations, the private sector, and of course, the public. This work is already starting. As an example, a task force is already being formed to look into the protection of the Bear River that runs right through the middle of the burn area. Successful recovery will require informed and coordinated leadership throughout all levels of government, sectors of society, and the phases of the recovery process. In order to further these efforts and provide the ability to continue to seek and secure resources from the state and possibly the federal government, we are requesting that your board ratify the proclamation of the local emergency and direct staff to forward a copy of the resolution to the Director of the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, that the state take actions that waive regulations that may hinder response and recovery efforts, make response and recovery assistance available under the California Disaster Assistance Act, and that the state expedite access to state and federal resources and other disaster federal relief assistance that may be available. Thank you for your board's consideration of this request, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Yeah, thanks. And again, thank you again, Dave, for fabulous work. Experience for me was literally amazing. I went to bed getting reports expecting the worst, that fires like this nowadays would grow during the night at an amazing level. And in this case, the first concern is people's public safety, actual personal safety. And then secondly, the loss of any possessions that they might have. I think losing your home must be one of the worst experiences anybody could have in their life. But beyond that is just a huge amount of work that includes trying to get back to normal, not only during, but after that fact. And you've just done a great job and deserve huge credit. So I didn't want to
Thank you.
Have the opportunity to mention that.
Thank you, sir.
And a relatively new job for you.
Thank you, sir. And I have a lot of support with a great team, sir.
Yep. So Cindy?
I too wanted to thank you, Dave. And I know that later, we're going to hear from our public safety officials. And obviously, the community is so grateful for everything that went on. I think often, your team are also first responders and they're helping. And thank you for being at the town hall Saturday night and all of the resources you've put together. And thank you for your dedication to these folks and getting them back on their feet. They have so many questions. I'm getting tons and tons of emails and calls asking where they go, what they can do. And I appreciate that 211 line and all of the efforts on your staff heart. The hours on Friday and Saturdays, just so I can make sure I let people know that?
These, I think, are just now getting confirmed, but I believe it's 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Friday and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturday.
Okay. I'll wait for the confirmation, but I know people are anxious to talk to someone and know how to clean up their property, what to do, what to start with.
Absolutely.
And really appreciate it.
I'd really like to encourage people to go to our River Fire landing page. The absolutely best information will be posted there very continuously. And that information, including the Local Assistance Center, will be there as well.
Great. Thank you.
Jim?
I too. Dave, thank you for your hard work over the last several days. One of the critical things that we need to move quickly on is the working with the Placer County Water Agency about if we ever get any rain and the runoff that's going to go into those canals and contaminate our water supply. So I know that the water agency is concerned about that. And I just want to let them know that we're concerned as well and we'll work with them to clean that up as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Suzanne?
Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. If you could be more specific to the folks attending here, what does the state of emergency entail? What does it provide?
At the local level, the state of emergency provides just a few key tools for us. One of those is that it provides some additional flexibility in our procurement. As you can imagine, sometimes there's a need to secure resources rather quickly. And so it provides some additional authority of the CEO and his delegates to procure things outside of the normal procurement policy. One of the other things that it does is it also activates what's called the Disaster Service Worker Program. So if we had a need to bring out county staff to support other efforts, thankfully, we've got great partners in the Red Cross Salvation Army and that, and we haven't had to go down that road. But if we did, it gives us the opportunity to activate that system and essentially bring in other county staff as disaster service workers. And of course, the most important thing about that local proclamation is the part about requesting additional services and assistance from the state and the federal government.
Okay, that's services and assistance from the state for the people who've suffered from this fire, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I see some faces in here. And when we hear state of emergency, all of a sudden, we start thinking about COVID and requirements and stuff like this. Has nothing to do with COVID at all. This is going to try to make the lives of the people who were hurt in this fire a little easier. We all did go and tour the fire in this yesterday. And I have to tell you, the devastation was amazing to see chimneys left, nothing but a chimney. Those people are devastated. So this emergency service here is for those people. Has absolutely nothing to do with anything else but helping the people that were injured by this fire. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll now open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Is this regarding this or just general?
Just regarding the issue before us specifically and only is the proclamation to declare an emergency.
My name is Lee Frye, Placer County resident. So I just had a question. Is there a definitive word on how the fire started?
Last I heard, not at this time.
Was it from a campground?
We know it started in a campground. We don't know how it started.
It's under investigation.
Hello, Board. I'm Salam. So I understand that we're proposing a local emergency declaration to handle this fire, and that's what this is about. Okay, so I'm opposed to that because I don't have any faith in this board to handle emergency powers based on how they've handled, how you've handled the emergency powers given for this pandemic that we're all suffering through. And if it is going to be approved, I would first want to know exactly what money is going to go to the people who have been affected and how it's going to be distributed to them. I don't want just this blanket, you know, as Ms. Jones is saying, that the money's going to go to them, but there's no details about that. So no, I say no more emergencies. The board has not demonstrated a ability to handle those kinds of powers. And I don't want you to have any additional powers than you already are abusing.
Hi, I'm Shelley. I live in Colfax. And I was in a zone right next to a zone that was evacuated. So I went ahead and evacuated. But I didn't get a text message or any, it was really hard to find that information. It was not, it is not, there is not a program set up in Placer County like there is in Nevada County. There's a company that provides emergency text messages in Nevada County, and there needs to be something in Placer County. Because I didn't, I didn't, I should have known way sooner. And I didn't. And I tried to find that information online, and it was not easy. Even through Yubanet, it wasn't, it wasn't easy. They give zones. And I mean, I don't know zones. Like, come on, what the heck? I'm not, I'm not in law enforcement. I had to ask my boyfriend to give me that information. So we need something like that. We need, we need a better system for that, okay? Please.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just comment that, you know, in these circumstances, we attempt to learn and do adaptive management. And that has come to our attention, and your comment is well taken with me, and I think several of us.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynette. And I just want to say that I am opposed to putting our county back in a local emergency. There should be no reason. We have plenty of funding. I mean, you've already received $77.4 million of funding from the federal and state government. There should be no reason that a local emergency needs to be enacted to request more money from the federal government, which is going to bring more government overreach to our county, which we're already experiencing and trying to fight against. I'm extremely opposed to that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael. I'm opposed to local emergency as well. One thing that I haven't heard about the fire is how the reservoirs are being drained of water. And wouldn't water be a good resource if there's a fire? Why isn't the board not doing something to oppose the draining of the reservoirs? In 2019, the reservoirs were way beyond capacity. Okay, now, now, two years later, or not even two years later, they're down to, like Folsom Lake is down to 26% last time I heard, and that was a few weeks ago. Why aren't you guys addressing these issues? Thank you.
Okay, we have one Zoom caller.
Kathleen, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Catherine Crawford, and I am a resident in Roseville. But I am a retiree from civil service, having worked in both the Governor's Office of Emergency Services and a city office of emergency services. So I'm very familiar with the benefits that will come from this proclamation of a local emergency. And it will qualify the residents who have lost property and help them rebuild. It is an essential service, and it would be a shame for this board not to ratify the proclamation of local emergency. The state resources and FEMA resources can be extremely beneficial. They can help qualify people for low-cost loans and really help them get back in place as quickly as possible. And you can also work during the recovery period on mitigation, including the Bear River, and, you know, try to build the community back safer than it was before. So I really do urge you to realize the direct impact this will have on the people in the local fire zone and their loss of property and their loss of being able to be within their home and allow them to rebuild as quickly as possible. It's never going to go as quickly as everyone would like because of regulations and permits and all of that kind of thing. But without this funding, they are up the proverbial river without a paddle. So please, please adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wesley Dill, please go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Wesley, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Anita Reeves, Buckbridge Court, Members of the Board. Good to be with you again, unfortunately, under these circumstances. Wish it was better. But as mentioned, I really do appreciate the update that Dave gave. Gave us a lot of information of kind of the plan, and that really helps us. As you know, communication is an issue. My understanding is actually, I did get, because I have signed up my phone number with the, I think, I forget now, years ago when I worked here.
Placer County.
Placer County. And so I got the land. Placer County, and so I got the landline, which I still have, but I got Nevada County's on my cell phone to actually get back in. So yeah, there's, I don't know if I have to sign up, so more clear information, so really do appreciate Dave, really good overview, looking forward to the Local Resource Center. We can express how thankful we are in the Buck Ridge tract above the Bear River Park, how grateful we are our houses are still standing, and we thank everyone, all the various agencies, your board's direction, our responses from our local agencies, and we look forward to hearing the update on the event. Such frightening and shocking events affect people in countless ways. Many people will be dealing with the impacts for years. It's good to know that county agencies will be working with residents who suffered trauma and loss to help them move forward. As you're well aware, many people from out of this area also enjoy the beautiful Bear River Park. It's not only the local population. So at this time in our neighborhood, and I talked to everybody, and I heard a earful in my neighborhood, at this time, we're requesting that the board hold a workshop prior to the park reopening to also include the local community, anyone but those Buck Ridge and Milk Ranch homeowners. We know we can provide valuable input to help ensure the park is a family, safe, fun, and beautiful destination. Again, we look forward to the county working with us to keep the Bear River Park beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, the issue before us is the consideration of the resolution to declare local emergency. What is the pleasure of the board?
Can I comment? She has one more comment.
Be the last one, sure.
My name is Sarah, and I'm just curious. I know we've had fires in Placer County before. Do we always declare a local emergency and ask for excess funds? Can you provide the data behind that so we can see that there's nothing special about this one?
Correct.
To where you need more money?
I've been here for about 26 years, and it's my recollection that every time there has been a major fire, there has been accompanying a local emergency declaration.
Okay.
Along with floods and other issues like that.
Well, you can say that all you want, but if we don't see it, how do we know that that's true?
It's a public record, just like this meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, did you have something?
Happy to answer any final questions.
Oh, sure, thanks, Dave. So Cindy and Suzanne lights are on, so why don't we go there first?
Two items. Certainly, I'm going to support this emergency declaration. We've done that, and I was very instrumental in working on a flood of 97 and I think 2000, in which we had very significant flood damage in the county, and it assisted us greatly in rebuilding homes and bridges and communities. I did take to heart many public comments I've been receiving on the evacuation notices and our protocols, and ours are different than Nevada County's. I did talk to Sheriff Bell. We do need better coordination of that, of that messaging. I did receive a lot of text messages from Nevada County, and I'm signed up for Placer Alert. Of course, I wasn't at my home, I was down here, but I was getting on my cell phone Nevada County messaging. So it was very effective in the system they use, and I'd like to urge our looking at that and also agree with taking a look at this campground and our operation there before we reopen anything. So I just wanted to make those points for the public. And I'm happy to make a motion, but I'll listen to Suzanne first.
Thank you. I have some questions too for legal, because the folks here have referenced that us putting the county into a state of emergency. I don't believe this is similar to the state of emergency regarding COVID that came down. So my question about the state of emergency, what that does, is that makes it possible for the residents then to apply to the state, right, for like low-interest loans or some people who have lost their homes and have to rebuild? Isn't that what it is? Is this allows the people who've been damaged and injured now to go to the state and apply for certain things? Does that money, does that money come to the county in a big bundle and then we hand it out?
Well, before Dave responds to the money part, let me respond to the legal. When we declared a local health emergency for COVID, we also declared a local emergency. Thank you. And that local emergency was the same as what this local emergency is, and that is to tap into necessary funds to help fight the emergency, both on the state and federal level. It's very common to pair them, and as the boards are aware, we have since terminated both of the COVID local emergencies. So this local emergency is that pair, that one side of what we did with COVID, and it is very common, and I've not been here as long as Robert, but I do know that it is, it is routine to, in the case of these major events, to declare a local emergency in order to seek necessary funds to help with recovery. With that, I'll leave it to Dave to explain the money side.
Well, and it's also reimbursement to local agencies.
Correct.
The Water Agency for their infrastructure, it qualifies you for federal funding, but I'm sorry, Dave.
No, no.
It goes to a multitude of taxpayer-paid facilities that have now been damaged and destroyed.
The one thing that Dave touched on that I think is really important for people to understand too is that there are other aspects of declaring a local emergency that help us to move quicker than we would under normal circumstances. And one of those is the purchasing, where we're often required to do a request for proposals or bids in order to procure something. This allows us within parameters to shorten that time period so that necessary supplies and services can be acquired quickly in order to respond. That's a really important aspect. The other aspect is allowing us to have more of the cooperation with other agencies and how that operates. So those are all aspects of, this is not just about money. This is about services, goods, and being able to work with other agencies quickly.
In a sense, it's a formal request from your board for assistance from the state and possibly federal agencies. It's really what it comes down to.
Okay, I was just trying to put everybody's mind at ease.
If you wanted a little bit more information about the money, so there are various aspects of how these programs work, and of course Supervisor Gustafson was correct, one part of it is going to be recovering the costs for the response, and it's not just law and fire, of course, there, very important, and that was why that F-MAG that we got on Wednesday night was so vital, because that brings immediate federal money to the table. I think we all were fearful of where this was going to go. I think Supervisor Wagan mentioned, you know, going to bed Wednesday night and what we were going to find when we came up, woke up Thursday morning. I think we all were kind of braced for something much worse than we were faced with, fortunately. So there's that piece of it, and it's going to go to not just the county, but PCWA, City of Colfax, NID, any of their other public agencies, public service providers that had some part of the response, and you would be amazed, honestly, at how many different sets of folks that can get involved in something like this. The other piece, of course, is the recovery money, and again, part of that will be for public restoration of services, again, NID, PCWA, the Roads Department, all of the, anything that was damaged or destroyed, we can seek reimbursement with this proclamation. It does open up the possibility of individual assistance, and that's why the damage assessments and some of the work we did early on is so critical, because we have to prove and make a justification, a strong case to the state and the federal government about why it is that the impacts from this incident exceed the capability of local government. They teach us in emergency management that all disasters begin and end locally, and they want that local control, because we're the ones who know about our local community, we know where the impacts are, we know those unique things about certain areas that wouldn't otherwise be captured in a census or in some kind of other, you know, large metric. So that's why that's so critical, that's the local level, and that is why it is so important that we start here with that proclamation of local emergency.
Correct, and one of the things I think people don't really realize, when we toured yesterday and they spoke to us about the cost, and just remember, that fire burned for what, five days, from Wednesday through about Sunday? And the fire that's going on right now, the other fire has been going for, I don't know how long, but the cost to fight this fire was over eight million, was it eight, eight plus some, million dollars? And in order, unless you taxpayers want to foot the bill on all that, then we should ask the state to reimburse some of those expenses.
With that, I would make a motion.
That's the purpose, that's the purpose of emergency services.
I would make a motion to approve the emergency.
Second.
Motion, Gustafson, second, home to approve the emergency. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, as I mentioned.
Excuse me, I have a question.
No, actually, this issue is closed, the board's done, we've got a big agenda.
Okay, well, we would like a date that you're going to end the local emergency, since you just approved it, and I'd also like to know if you can reallocate the funds that you've already received.
You're going to have to sit down, but I will tell you that, I will tell you that we don't know when we will, we will do that, as is always the case with these. So again, a reminder, somewhat after 11 o'clock, we've been hearing from our fire chief and sheriff. There was actually an amazing air-based defense of Colfax and the fighting of the fire. We'll get details on that, and then a company that was an amazing evacuation and housing of individuals from the whole city of Colfax plus. So that will be sometime after 11 o'clock. And now, we're going to go back to the regular routine of our agenda, which is to start off with our consent, and so I understand that Supervisor Holmes wants to pull 11A.
11A, yes, please. Megan, can they post the picture that?
Yes, I can get that slide up for you.
The slide, the photo.
Aren't you going to take the item first?
Did you want to take the other items first?
We'll certainly take the welcome to Senate again.
Well, I just knew you wanted to pull it to do the commendations, so. Yeah. Figure agendas, so.
There it is. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. Just want to recognize a local Boy Scout from Troop 435 of Rockland. His Eagle Scout project was to restore. That bell is a fire notification bell from the Loomis Fire Protection District that they used for many decades over the years. It had been put in storage for the last 40 years, since we have new technology, but the young man actually put that together, worked with the community members to build the platform for it, and had the bell restored, and it's just an amazing scout project that will stand the test of time, and it's so important for the community of Loomis to recognize the service that the Loomis Fire Protection did over the many years. And so I just wanted to, I'm going to present this commendation to him at the Town of Loomis Board Meeting tonight, and, but I just wanted to recognize Justin Lowery for the amazing job on putting that Eagle Scout project together.
Thanks, Jim.
And I'll move approval.
So there's a resolution before us with a motion to approve by Holmes and a second by?
Gore.
Gore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Great, great job. Okay, we have the rest of the consent calendar. These are items that are intended to be taken all at one time, but the board is happy to pull any individually and discuss them by either any of my colleagues or anyone from the public. Come forward and state your name for the record, and then this is, if you have a request for us to pull something on consent and discuss it on its own.
A resolution that over time, I'm hoping I can convince you to pass.
Richard, I think your comments would be appropriate during public comment, so if you could come back up then, there's, there's a whole list of specific items that this is addressing, and it's not public comment, so if you come back up in a couple of minutes when we do public comment.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, seen no other requests to pull something?
Motion, Gustafson, second, Jones for the remaining consent items. Roll call, please.
Gore, Holmes, Jones, Gustafson, Wagan.
Yes. So now we'll move to a board member and county exec reports, and I'm going to kick it off a little bit differently, just to comment that, as we all know, and I think a lot of folks who are here today have been coming to attend to discuss for us the board's actions as it relates to the COVID pandemic, so I, because the request has been recently to consider some other additional action. And so just to summarize what the board has done over the last 18 months now, we've written, I think, five letters to the governor. Generally speaking, I can't speak for all five of us, but I'd say that our position has differed significantly from the governor's policies. If there's a common thread amongst all of us, I think consistently, it has been that we would have preferred local emergency health authority as compared to the governor's policies. Once the governor institutes his orders, though, those take precedent over county authority, so we've had to deal with that. We finally passed a resolution articulating that, and have met with some and talked with others, but at this particular point in time, with the cessation of the governor's order on June 15th, I don't see any constructive or valuable county action at this time for which I was going to put something on the agenda, but I just want to throw it out for communication purposes to the public, and, and board members may have comments of their own and/or other reports that they want to convey at this time under normal board reports. So Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I agree with your comments. You know, in a free society, sometimes there's a conflict between individual liberties and public safety, and when.
Absolutely not.
I'm sorry, we're going to run a nice meeting here where everyone gets a chance to speak, and that includes my colleague Jim Holmes at this particular point in time, without interruption.
Could you turn it up for those, for the old guys here that are hearing losses of?
One of those, so yeah, if we can, IT can make sure.
I can't hear, I can't hear a lot.
Sure. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. So as I was saying, we live in a free society, and then sometimes there's a conflict between individual liberty and public safety, and what we're going through now is one of those times. And our job as elected representatives is to find a balance between the two. Sometimes the scale tips one way, sometimes it tips the other way. But I think in the last two years, this board has worked hard to find that balance and to maintain that balance, and we've done a good job in that regard, and I want to thank the board for that. We passed, as Supervisor Wagan said, we passed several resolutions pushing back on state regulations that we do not agree with, and we've done everything in our power to help small businesses survive. So I don't see the need of any more public debate. We've done the best job that we can with the tools that we have to, I don't want to see any more public debate about this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jim. Cindy?
I wanted to agree with what Jim said and what you've said, Robert. For those of you out here, we're listening quietly and paying respect to your point of view. We also have probably, what, 400, 300 and some thousand other folks that we have to represent, and we do, most of our job up here is trying to find balance in different perspectives, in different ideologies, in different views on many, many things, and it is not an easy job. I know it look, maybe it looks easy. It weighs on all of us to make sure that we represent everybody to the best of our ability. I am proud of what we've done throughout this pandemic. I'm proud of our staff and our support team. I'm sorry so many of you have expressed disappointment and frustration. I hear that, and I reflect on it, and I try to improve, and that's, that's the human cause, and I hope we all can work together to solve issues. Thanks.
Thanks, Cindy. Suzanne?
Yes, I wanted to add on to a lot of these things. We do get emails from everyone every day, tons of them, wanting constitutional county, which is something I'm going to ask legal to chime in on just a little bit and explain to people why that is not even a possibility, that we could declare this a constitutional county. But we also have concerns, of course, about mask mandates. Mask mandates in school is a big one. I served 10 years on the Placer County Board of Education, and what I will tell you is that we all have stovepipes. The, all of our education comes under the jurisdiction of the state. The county health department. The county health department, and then all of the school districts, the county, the California Department of Education, they all have control of their own authority. We, as a board, Placer County Board of Supervisors, cannot tell the schools what to do. So, this whole stack of emails I have are from people who do not want mask mandates on their children. I just tell you, if I had school-aged children, my email would be in here as well. So, we are, all of us, we are all in agreement on that, but our hands are tied. So, what I would recommend to all of you is go to your school board meetings, go to your school board meetings, and you express yourselves at your school board meetings, okay? And then, some of the other things that we're hearing about, of course, mask mandates in Placer County, we don't have one. Sacramento County has one, Yolo County has implemented, Placer County has not. This board, we are gonna do everything we can within our power, remember, within our power and authority, to prevent that. Now, when the governor comes down and says, "You will do this," it's a little bit difficult for us to not...
Autonomous.
No, it is, because our authority is conferred to us from the state. We are not autonomous. But anyway, I'm gonna let Legal explain that to you, because that's not really my position. So, vaccine mandates, we will fight. We will fight against vaccine mandates. What the state does to their employees, what companies do to their employees, there again, we don't have authority over those. We, as a county, will do everything we can. We do not want vaccine passports. We do not want any of that. And so, we just want you guys to realize, we do hear you. We do, and we will do everything in our power, you have to remember that, in our power and authority, to do that. Now, we will write letters, you know, we'll write letters. I have constituents coming to me, we're calling superintendents, but there again, all we can do is call like you can. Since you are the parents, you have way more power and authority at those school meetings than I do. Use your power and authority over your, at your school board meetings. Karen, could you just kind of chime in a little bit on that? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but the constitutional county and why we can't declare ourselves a constitutional county?
Well, first of all, I have yet to hear anybody explain what exactly that means, but what we've gleaned from all the websites is that it would be a proposal that this county declare itself the determiner of what is constitutional, and that is per se unconstitutional. The county is a political subdivision of the state. Each one of the board members, and including me and Todd, have taken oaths to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state. The county only has that authority that's conferred to it by the state. It cannot suddenly declare itself to be an island in itself and determine what is constitutional.
Thanks.
Anyway, thank you all for listening, and I appreciate you all coming today.
Todd, do you have any reports to?
Only just, I didn't have a chance, I know Dave Atkinson had to leave, but I just wanted to say, I express gratitude to him, his staff, I mean, I think it's been exceptional under such dramatic situations over the last year. I just wanted to give him a quick thank you, and then I know Marshall's in the back, but, you know, jumping on the chipper program, I know you made some decisions this morning, but I think this is a tremendous program, I think they thought outside the box, and I think that's just a testament to our staff and the willingness to provide services, hopefully as efficiently and expeditiously as possible. So, I just wanted to give two thank yous to them and to their staff, they've done exceptional over the last few weeks.
And with that, I'm gonna just add, I want to thank you, Todd, and all the county execs office, there were just some amazing things accomplished, and it doesn't go unnoticed by us, and a lot of it is invisible to us to an extent, but it's sure, on behalf of the board, thank you for the, yeah, thanks. So, with that, now, we will close the committee reports and open it up to the public for comment. People will have three minutes to speak, and please come forward and state your name if you'd like to do so. Thank you.
My name's Richard. I'm a citizen of the county, and what I'd like to do is present a resolution, and I've got an individual copy here for each of the supervisors, and what the resolution proposes is a Second Amendment sanctuary county for Placer County. And what I did was, I plagiarized Yuba County's resolution, and so, essentially, all I did was just change the name. Yuba County is the only county in California that is a Second Amendment sanctuary county. And six, over 60% of the counties in the United States have adopted such a resolution. For the Kool-Aid drinkers here, that means over half. And I'm gonna pursue this, hopefully, and meet individually with you supervisors and attempt to get you on board with this. I think it's, the Second Amendment is extremely important. It's been, it's been a stutter for lack of a word, it's been eroded to the point that it's almost, it's almost been eliminated, and there are many in various levels of government who want to eliminate it. I think, since the Chinese Communist Party's biological warfare attack on us, if it wasn't for the Second Amendment, you folks would have no power. They would have locked this building or substituted other people for you with no election. You would just be, you would just be thrown out without the Second Amendment. So, please remember, please remember that.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the fact that you, Placer County is a much better county to live in as far as mask mandates and, you know, your stance on vaccine passports. I appreciate that.
The softball asleep, though.
I stood yesterday with the nurses and doctors outside of Kaiser protesting their vaccine policy, and spoke with several nurses and doctors there, and they are very concerned because they are on the front lines, they've been fighting on the front lines all along and seeing people with COVID, and now they're seeing people with reactions from the vaccine, and there are many. I wrote a few notes. I have several family members who have had COVID, tested positive, and we know that the PCR test is faulty, inaccurate, depending on the number of cycles that is run, and it's also been removed and pulled from the EUA. It's only authorized for emergency use, and it has been pulled per the CDC as of December 2021. So, though people are still using it to determine whether someone is sick or not, and so cases are elevated, and even now, cases are elevated. My sister-in-law was, did a children's camp, and one of the other counselors became ill, tested positive for COVID, and so, my sister-in-law was required to test, and while she had a sniffle and a slight sore throat, she tested positive for COVID. And I'm just curious, I'd like to know from, like, our health department, first of all, what is the cycle threshold? Are they testing or determining whether someone is vaccinated or not vaccinated for COVID when they are testing? And also, is there any way to determine whether the test can differentiate between a common cold, you know, a common summer cold, you know, everybody gets it sometimes, and COVID? So, like, my sister-in-law had a sniffly nose and a sore throat and tested positive for COVID, so, like, that could have been just a common cold. And then, I was, I learned that, according to data from Israel, the vast majority vaccinated, it's like, the date, the rate of infection is the same in vaccinated versus unvaccinated.
Your three minutes are up, but also, I have a suggestion. If you, you know, we clearly are in the public health business at the county, and if you get for me those science and/or health questions, I am happy to get an answer to you from our public health officer.
I have sent them to our health officer, and they don't respond to me.
Send them to me, and/or any of us on the board, but send them to me, and, you know, that way, we can actually get you information and maybe get the public information, and periodically, we will be having updates from our health officer as conditions warrant, so get those to us, and we'd be happy to help.
I'm just concerned that with cases elevating, you know, because of the common cold, you know, or a little summer cold, or whatever, that they want to, you know, people are, they're being afraid now, again, to put on masks and to...
Get us that information, then, if you pay attention to when we have the updates from Dr. Oldman. Thanks. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Tina. I wanted to address some comments made by Rod Oldham at the July 27, 2021 Board of Supervisor Meeting that was held up in Tahoe. He made some statements that I found startling, so I went and did a little research. He said that there is a surge of Delta variant cases. Now, since we know that the PCR test is faulty and that the CDC has recalled them because they can't tell the difference between COVID and the flu, I'd like to know how we know that it's the Delta variant. He said that this variant is more contagious than the original, and that there is a study that shows people infected with the Delta are shedding over 1,000 times more virus particles than folks affected with COVID. Now, based on what I know on virology and epidemiology, this sounds like it might actually be possible and plausible, but I couldn't find any such studies, so I'd like to see that, please. He also said that the Delta has a shorter incubation period. Well, yes, this is the second law of thermodynamics that says all things devolve into chaos unless energy is applied. All naturally mutating viruses are going to devolve. They always get more contagious but less potent, always. There's a lot of people who have said that there was the Ebola virus mutation that became more potent. So, I went back and I looked at those studies, and those studies said that the Ebola mutation was more contagious and that it was more virulent, which means that the onset is increased of the illness, but there was nothing in those studies that showed that it was more potent or more deadly. As far as I can tell, there are no viruses in the history of viruses that have become more potent or more deadly upon mutation. And if I am wrong about that, I'd like to see some studies, please. Dr. Oldham said that these things combined with loosening restrictions is contributing to a higher case rate, and he said that as of July 25th, the case rate was 10.3 cases per 100,000, which is a 5.1% test positivity rate. So what? Cases doesn't mean anybody is sick. Lots of businesses are mandating that their employees are tested. We're getting positive, positive tests for people who are not actually sick, when we already know that the PCR test has an up to an 80% false positive rate. I don't see why an increase in cases has anything to do with anything at this point. I am, the hospital beds are a joke, we have five hospitals and ICU, that's three people for per ICU.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to, if you could submit your questions to, but wrap up your comments, we'd appreciate it.
I call for a vote of no faith in Rod Oldham and ask that he immediately be removed at Placer County Health Officer.
I also voted no faith, and my name is Lynette. You consistently ignore our warnings and our attempts to protect Placer County, and you've dismissed our documentation as speculation. Your email, Mr. Wygant, stated that, it is stated that getting too far ahead of the curve is a waste of our local resources. You stated it is your hope that the governor will defer county health to set policy related to our residents going forward. With this statement, you are clearly saying everything that we have requested you not to do, so that tells me you're not hearing what we're saying. We are here again regarding the unconstitutional mandates that have been put in place, tearing our country apart, and by allowing this, you comply with tyranny. Military State of California workers and many other workers are being mandated to get this shot, or they'll lose their jobs, and that's happening here in Placer County. Will you be putting this mandate upon Placer County employees? Again, intimidation, segregation, and discrimination is against the law. I urge you to read the Tennessee Governor's Executive Order that was just put out, and I have a copy for you. We have lost faith in government and in you, the people we elected to represent us. We are tired of this cat and mouse game, you are leading us to believe we have choices, and when in fact, we do not. You accepted the $77.4 million from the federal government, and by keeping this blood money, you're putting your financial gain over our freedoms, and you prove that you have been bought off. You are moving forward with the plan to implement the vaccine passport by allowing the CMS 911 5-F to be implemented here at Placer County, which is a nationwide project, and will be implemented in every county across the State of California and the nation. We know what is going on, and we ask that you be transparent with us. Just tell us when we're gonna not be able to shop in grocery stores anymore, or when we're gonna be deemed a threat to public health and removed from our homes, and put in what those shielding camps the CDC is telling us about. We will, we will, we are not willing to sit comfortable anymore, we are here to fight for our freedoms, to keep this nation intact, for our children. We are done, we're not gonna take it anymore, and by locking us down or following mandates, you're breaking several laws, CalGina, ADA, and the Nuremberg Code. You are also perpetuating crimes against humanity. We asked you to be the examples and leaders, but now you'll be the example of failed government with no backbone to stand up to protect our residents. Our voices are being heard across the nation. I can tell you now that we, the people, see right through it. We know where our money is going, we know who contributes to your campaigns, we know who your buddies are, and we know the back deals that you make. We are the news now, and we will feature your lies and corruption for all to see. God works in mysterious ways, and this year just went from a year of disappointment to the year of accountability. You will not be able to hide from accountability, because as of today, you cannot say you didn't know. We've sent several emails, we've asked you to pass resolutions, and I'm asking...
Thanks for wrapping up your comments.
I'm wrapping it up. I'm asking every employee of Placer County to stand up, say no, remove your masks, do not comply, do not allow your children to be abused any longer. Take the masks.
You're gonna have to complete your comments and sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In Placer County, and is it Susan or Suzanne? I just want to say thank you for trying. I appreciate that. Regarding COVID and all this nonsense that we're dealing with, I just want to bring to your attention, and I've sent this all to you, that there is a company created by Dr. Dave Martin, it's called MCAM CNBC IQ 100, which is the International Patent Library, and COVID-19 SARS II was attempted to be patented in 1999 and failed, again in 1999, and success... and successfully patented in 2002 and filed as a bioweapon. Did you know that? Yeah. Um over 700 patents are filed regarding COVID, including a real test for COVID. That is only by the CDC, by the way, this is the CDC that patented. And they paid a fee to keep it private. Yeah. And the tests that actually exist, no one has access to because they won't allow you to have it. So yeah, that's interesting, isn't it? Uh ivermectin is another safe treatment, by the way, if you weren't aware of that. I just want to let you know, there are treatments and they're being used by the frontline doctors, um which is AFLD.org, if anyone needs that information, you can get info, legal help, all about the, the, it's not a vaccine, it's a gene therapy injection. And um and if you need treatments that you can't get from your doctor, they can help, just, just so you all know. Also, if you haven't heard of VAERS, which is Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting, it's been around for 31 years. So far, we, in 31 years, there have been like various numbers of reactions and deaths for all the vaccines that have ever been given. Well, in the last six months, there have been more deaths and reactions from this vaccine than in 31 years of all other vaccines. I mean, that's insane and, and, and they're not pulling it, they're not pulling these shots. Do you guys see what's going on here? Like this is, this is evil. I mean, there's, there's no mistaking that this is evil. That, there, there's like 11,000 deaths reported in VAERS right now from this, from these shots. Last time that, that there was like 25, I think, they pulled it, 25. We're at, and they, and VAERS says they only catch like 1%. That's, that's, that's scary. Did you know that there was a cruise ship where everyone had to be, had to be injected with the shot? And now there's an outbreak of COVID on that cruise ship? How are they gonna spin that one?
Would you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, I, I just, I just want you guys to be aware of this stuff, okay? Please, please look at the actual, like, science isn't the science because science is always evolving, it's always changing. You know, they're weaponizing that, so, thanks.
Good morning, Board, my name is Salam. And first I just wanted to address the comment that was made earlier that our hands are tied, your hands are tied. Well, yes, they're tied by the Constitution and your oath to it. But it seems that when it's to your advantage and it can serve yourselves, you take advantage of the provisions in the Constitution. But when it comes to protecting the rights of the people who are the sovereigns, uh your, your hands are, seem to be tied. Now, uh I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, especially the public, there was a lawsuit filed earlier this year in Placer County. It's case number S, uh S-CV-0046396. It was filed by Charles Wilson against the entire county of Placer. And it starts out, it says, "Placer County allowed a culture of nepotism and self-dealing by appointing family and friends of the Board of Supervisors to high-level county positions, including jobs responsible for ensuring public safety." So among the allegations in this complaint, I've been able to verify some of them, not all of them, but a lot of this has already been made public. For example, it says here um that Tammy Euler is the, is really the, one of the main people, uh subjects of this lawsuit. Tammy Euler was Kirk Euler's wife, Kirk Euler used to be the board chair here. And uh she was, she seemed to have received some special treatment here. One thing is that she received a 28% increase to her salary, which is highly unusual. That was brought up in a board, uh a agenda item. And Kirk Euler excused himself during the vote, but he didn't say why. And also the position, the, uh, her name was not mentioned, but only the ID for that position. So it was sort of obfuscated so that nobody really knew what the, who the, uh, the 28% unusual salary increase was going to. There was also a, an FPPC, Federal Political Practices, uh complaint filed against uh the county. Or at least, and last I heard here, it was referred to the, uh, the Attorney General's office. And so um there's been a lot of, uh, I think the, the nepotism claim at the beginning of this lawsuit is justified. The one last thing I wanted to mention is that the District Attorney, the serving District Attorney who was appointed, uh he applied, but when he applied, apparently he was not a registered voter of Placer County and also he wasn't a resident of Placer County. And that was a strict requirement on the application. He wasn't even supposed to apply with, with that being the case. So I'm gonna continue investigating this, but I wanted the public to be aware that this lawsuit is going on. Again, it's in Placer County Superior Court, case number SCV 0046396. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Jason. And um a few things I kind of want to address, uh kind of comment on some of the things that you guys spoke that the chance I could hear while I was trying to attend to my child. So one thing I want to kind of address with you, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I read a tweet to you from the day before from Governor, from Governor, Governor Newsom, where he stated, people that are not vaccinated, he compared them to dangerous drunk drivers. Now, right there, that should be an outcry to you. So basically, all your constituents that choose to operate in their free choice, the governor just called them a murderer, compared them to a murderer drunk driver. That should be an outcry and that should be something you guys and each one of your constituents should back up and say, I don't believe that. Because by you being silent, you're in agreement. So, thank you. And so I brought my children here today and my wife and that really offended me because they called my children and my wife a murderer, a murderer drunk driver. And that is from our governor that you guys say that you have to obey to. Now, you know, bringing up the constitutional county, you guys, we should already be a constitutional county, okay? All, because you guys swore an oath to that and that's why we put that resolution and gave it before you guys. So you guys can confirm that oath and confirm to the constituents that we stand by the Constitution and by everybody's individual rights. So with that said, um I want to share a quick story with you. You know, that's personal to me, that I don't like to share much because, you know, I feel guilty and responsible to it. I have an older daughter and when she was less than a year, almost a year old, she did a regular vaccine, okay? And at that vaccine, that night, she went into convulsions and she went into the hospital, was in the hospital for two days, almost lost her. And when she came back from the hospital, all her skills from walking, from talking, everything she just learned in the past year was gone, was wiped out. And during that time, that's when I started edu, my, educate myself on vaccines. And I found out, you know, that, at that time, that there's nothing I can do. I can't sue, I can't go after the hospital for that. And that was wrong. So that's when I decided to do my research and operate in my rights. My two boys here, both of these boys, they were born at home, never had a vaccine, they're healthy as you can be, okay? They've never been to the hospital, okay? But that is my right and that's being taken away. And one more thing, we see a thread here, there's a lot of questions for Dr. Oldham, okay? We put out, I put out email to you guys, I think a lot of other people did as well, is that they were hired by you. And I think it would be very wise for you to request a town hall meeting for these questions to be addressed directly with him. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Bennett. And um I don't want you to count this as a public comment because what you will hear from me is the cry of my heart for America. I was born and raised in Asia and I was a missionary in Asia. And as Asians, we can smell tyranny and communism in smaller shapes and form. And let me tell you this, it's right here, knocking on every door. And it's so easy to be passive when you have not experienced living in communism. It makes me want to cry, and tyranny, you know, because you don't know what it's like. But I'm standing here today and I want to tell you, will you allow it or not? It's right here, we can't deny it. So I don't know if you've heard recently, our president in the Philippines, he made an announcement threatening every Filipino being escorted by policemen. You know, if they're not gonna choose to get these jabs, you know, they're gonna stay home, they can't do anything. And that's it. So if you've lived your life just submitting to this tyrant, what can, what can you do? But just to comply, we don't have freedom like what you guys have here in America. So please fight for freedom, fight for, for your freedom. And your position, I mean, I don't want to discredit your job, you're public servants and we know that. The Lord has placed you there for such a time as this. You got elected for a reason. Please go back to that day while you were elected as public officials or public servants. And please do not waste the sacrifices of your forefathers. Don't let it go to waste. Don't let it go to waste. So I am actually blessed being here because we don't have opportunities like this in the Philippines where, where you could go to the board meetings and talk to your leaders, you know, and hear what the people is saying. So this is a good opportunity, but please hear the cries of the people. And as you're sitting there, let me leave you with this. Imagine the faces of your children, of your grandchildren and the childrens to come and ask yourself this. Are you going to be a part to give them a future where they could live their lives as free people? Or are you going to be a part of giving them a future as miserable slaves? Make your choice, make your choice right now. We can stop tyranny and communism, thank you.
You're gonna have to wrap up your comments and um I wanna, we're gonna take only, how many do we have on Zoom? Two? Okay, we're gonna take only one more speaker here, you're gonna be the last one today. We will continue public comment at the end of the meeting, whenever that finishes. And uh I understand, but we've got a lot of work to do. We have staff that are paid to be here to give presentations. There's public comment at every meeting and you'll have the chance to comment at the end of this meeting if you so choose. Uh but we also have to conduct our business and we have to complete our meetings. So one more person here and then I'll leave the two people on Zoom to call in and testify also. Sure.
And this is directed to the council specifically?
It, it, could state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Susan Martino, I'm a resident of Lincoln. I just want everyone to write this down. I want everyone to hear this online in this state, it's called the Law of the Land. Any statute to be valid must be in agreement, okay? It is impossible for a law that violates the Constitution to be valid. This is distinctly follows all laws which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void. Marbury, Marbury versus Madison. That's all I want to say. I want everyone to write that down, Law of the Land, Marbury, Marbury versus Madison. And to Suzanne, um thank you for being so approachable and under, easy to understand, but I disagree that there's nothing you can do. Because when they're telling you to do something that doesn't go in line with the Constitution, it's your job to fight up against it.
So again, that, that'll be the end of public comment here today. We'll take two comments, we'll, we'll have public comment at the end of our meeting today to be continued. And they'll be here, at the next meeting, we'll have public comment again and the one after that. So anyway, let's proceed with the Zoom meetings and as I've mentioned, public comment here is finished.
Can we reduce the time?
We've been here for some time and we're gonna continue on as I just mentioned, so let's please do that.
Kathleen, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Kathleen Crawford and I'm a resident of Roseville. I want to state that there is a wide variety of public opinion on the issues of the CDC guidelines and COVID-19. And although you have an audience full of people with one viewpoint, there are many, many hundreds, if not thousands of people in this county with an equally strong and very different viewpoint. And it is important that everyone recognize that it is necessary to acknowledge the other side of each of these issues. And I really appreciate the fact that um it's important to have the professional staff. Dr. Oldham has been clear and he has been someone who has taken a moderate position that is important to take for public safety and health guidelines. I'm a grandparent, I have very strong viewpoints about unvaccinated children in public schools. I recognize that this county and many counties in the state want to have full-time in-person class use. My grandchildren are part of that, what I would call an experiment. But it is my opinion, there are many, many other people on the other side who see this as being absolutely essential. So I really encourage everyone to be a little less volatile, a little more understanding and to accept that there is a huge variety of opinion on this issue. And the other side feels equally fervently and equally strongly that there is the right opinion, the correct opinion. And therefore, it puts a board of supervisors, a city council, the public health department, the State Department of Education, local school districts in the middle of a very antagonistic and difficult place to make their decisions on behalf of the whole public, not just one or two viewpoints. Thank you very much.
The truth that matters.
Wesley Dill, unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I agree with the previous speaker, there's a lot of opinions out there and they diverge and you guys have to walk the thin line between them. I would like to emphasize however that opinions should be formed based on statistical data when it comes to public health and I don't really see that happening. We have a situation where natural immunity is absolutely not being recognized by our federal government or even Kaiser, even a lot of municipalities. Sutter just sent me an email saying you're not allowed in their hospital unless you're fully vaccinated or have a current PCR test, which we all discussed that. So the data suggests that the Delta variant is overcoming vaccine immunity. It's proven now, we look at all the countries with super high vaccination rates and the vaccine is failing. And there are reasons for that. The vaccine does not provide a immune response against a virus that is mutated. However, people who have had COVID are not getting infected. So data should be driven in the sense that it forms people's opinions. And she's right, everybody's opinion should be heard. We see that that's not the case, there's not a scientific debate right now. What we see is that scientific debate is being completely squashed down. Doctors are having their licenses threatened and so forth and so on. So I see that we have vaccine, basically mandates in Placer County in contrast to what you're saying we have. And you need only look at the large businesses such as Sutter who are requiring healthcare workers to be vaccinated regardless of whether they've had natural immunity or they choose to get it or not. So I believe you may not have constitutional authority to do the things that maybe you say you would like to do and I take you on your word, but you do have a bully pulpit. And I take you on your word, but you do have a bully pulpit. And I would like to see more vocalization from the board regarding these issues. So again, I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, the board will now take up its 9:40 timed item, which is Sunset Area Plan, Community Facilities District 2021 Sunset Area Plan. Michelle.
Hi, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Michelle Kingsbury, Analyst for the Community Development Resource Agency. The purpose of this hearing today is the continued public hearing for the formation of Community Facilities District 2021-1, which is our Sunset Area Plan Phase One for Transit Services. And this hearing is part of the formation proceedings for the district. As you're well aware, on May 25th, your board adopted the resolution of intention to form the district. And these proceedings will help satisfy conditions of approval for our Carvana project, which is located in the Sunset Area Plan, as well as it's part of our work program in terms of implementing our Sunset Area Plan that was adopted back in December of 2019. I am happy to walk through the formation proceedings if you like or if you'd like to take it from here, that is fine. And we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
We start with a, see if there are any questions or comments from board members. And I see none, but I'm going to take the opportunity to personally thank you, Michelle, for a lot of the work that not only went into this, but for me, we've had the community plan approval of the Sunset Industrial Area Plan back in 1997 and an update to this plan about a year and a half ago now, I think, along with concurrently the Placer Ranch Project. And in addition to that, the completion of the Placer County Conservation Plan. So one of the great things and statements, I think, is to be able to say that the first major issue under the conservation plan was for this project, which is going to create 850 new jobs in Placer County in an area that's been set aside for jobs creation along with the progress that's being made on the New California State Satellite Campus. And you did a huge amount of work on, so I just wanted personally, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I'll open this question up to the public for any comments or questions that they might have.
I see none, Chairman.
What is the pleasure of the board?
We have to announce the ballot.
We need to call for protests, any protests that are over here. If not, we can go to ballots.
There's no protests. And the clerk's office received one ballot in favor.
So thanks, I apologize. So with that, again, open up the public hearing. Number one, public, close the public hearing. We've done the ballots, so what's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, Second Gore. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll now jump to our next department item, which is Treasurer Tax Collector, Riola Vineyard Community Facilities District.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Janine.
Good morning. The board is being requested to adopt a resolution.
Janine, you're a little bit, your, the auto, audio is a little bit muddled.
Uh oh. Can you hear me better now?
Little bit.
Okay, I will speak up very loud and hopefully that will help. I tested this earlier and it was okay. So I apologize that it doesn't seem to be working properly now.
Yep, pretty good.
Your board is being requested this morning to adopt a resolution approving the annexation of property and approving and ordering and directing other related matters for Community Facilities District 2017-1, the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. I'd like to mention that all self participating by Dan Slip and Taylor, the property owner, and Professor Ponoming and Chris Lynch and John Paul from Bond County. The Riola Vineyard Specific Plan was originally approved in 2009 and amended in 2015 by your board to allow development of up to 930.
Janine? I'm sorry, the audio is just not working well enough. And Megan, did any?
I'm going to try something.
Janine, could you maybe call in by way of phone?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yep, we'll hold for you. No. Yeah, yeah. Do you want to come back to her, Janine?
She said she was calling. She, I don't think she has the number. Oh, I'm sending it to her right this second. It won't take too long, but.
Megan, I'm wondering if we could maybe plan something and maybe have IT set up something that we could go on with? Because our next folks are all here, right?
Yes, they are.
Why don't we do that and then maybe Greg could pick up something and yep. So we're going to take up our next. Yep, we're going to take up our next department item, which is Facilities Management Government Center and Placer Administrative Center Development Feasibility and Strategy Report.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, Chair Wygant, members of the board. I have, this is the item this morning is, as you were mentioning, the Development Feasibility Strategy Report. Paul Breckenridge, Capital Brew's Manager. Karen Boulay with Real Estate. And Corin Crawford with Griffin Swinerton. We also have Shawna Purvines here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the item. There we go, fabulous. So we're taking 5A and 5B together. And the first is the, the presentation on the Development Feasibility Strategy Report for potential development at both the PCGC, the Placer County Government Center and the, this center, the Administrative Center. And the second part is looking at a, bringing forward an agreement with Griffin Swinerton under an ERNA Exclusive Rights Negotiation Agreement. And Karen will be covering that one. So just as far as the scope, the strategy report, which does look at opportunities constraints for both the admin center and the PCGC, which came out of the, the Placer County Government Center Master Plan that your board adopted. The area that is designated in the hatched area to the right or the west side of the camp, or east side of the campus is the 50 plus or minus acres that would be potentially looked at for potential private development that Griffin Swinerton would be looking at. So kind of the existing conditions, this is a map that shows what we have currently, that same area, the 50 plus or minus acres. Do want to point out that the, the efforts that Griffin Swinerton will be moving forward with will include and kind of the, kind of keep in mind the reserve that the board has given for the Building 315, which is the Duette Theater. And then the heritage area, which was adopted as part of the master plan. So the area that is the upper 100 ramp that is here is our heritage area and then the area for Building 315. Little bit of the project timeline. So again, back in 2019, the master plan was adopted by your board with the EIR certification. Around that same time, an RFQ went out to look at master developer opportunities. Griffin Swinerton was identified and moved forward with several activities that Shawna Purvines and the Cedar team had funded to move forward with and grants that they were identified and landed paid for those, those efforts. So at this point, really the efforts, the funding for Griffin Swinerton has come out of the statewide funding through Cedra. 2020 April, there was a CSA put together and approved to move forward with Griffin Swinerton. And that set forth kind of the ball rolling for getting funding, which then ended up with allowing the feasibility and strategy report to come together. And again, the, just in general terms, the Development Feasibility Strategy Report has to do with opportunities constraints for potential development on that side of the campus. So RFQ covered a lot of areas that we had intended as far as what we thought the master developer would need to provide for the county. The biggest thing obviously is looking at long-term deals, if you will, for, in this case, private development on the campus. You know, as we came out of the master plan, the adoption of the master plan does include looking at potential opportunities for workforce affordable, achievable housing, commercial uses in that potential community event center, which was a reserve area on the campus based on the master plan. Master developer is envisioned to provide integration of technical, economic, contractual expertise as projects come forward. Envisioned as a multi-step, multi-contract process in planning, developing those areas identified for private development. One of the major objectives and overall implementation strategy for kind of that notion of town center and projects that will be looked at collaboratively with the county and in this case, Griffin Swinerton. And then some of the priorities, just looking at creating that town center idea, which came out of the master plan. And then obviously with the need for affordable workforce housing, that's going to be a big part of the effort with their, their work moving forward. So Corin's going to be presenting the Development Feasibility Strategy Report this morning, but did just want to point out that we're very pleased to be partnered at this point with their activities, their consulting to date. They are doing a lot of these public-private projects, helping organize or helping jurisdictions throughout the state, Orange County, LA County, and more closely Ranch at Cordova and their civic center. So 10-acre master planning for them and looking at potential opportunities for developing that location. So with that, Corin, would you like to come up, please?
Morning. Supervisors, a real pleasure to be here. We've, over the last really two years, gotten to know the county very well and dug, dug in and dove into the feasibility work that we, we'd started a little over a year ago. And so to come to this point, again, it's just a real pleasure to, to be able to present our findings and some vision for, for the future. The presentation that I have basically follows each section of the report as you see outlined there. And so let's just dive right in. As Paul mentioned, our work really took a market-based approach towards commercial as well as residential development. And so that market-based approach applies equally to the Placer County Government Center site and this site, the Fullweller site. It applies to the Auburn Market and generally the sort of mid, mid-region of Placer County, understanding that in the context of its adjacencies to the other parts of the county from the, the east to the west. The first thing that we wanted to take a look at, we recognize that we were undertaking this study in the midst of a pandemic and all of the different ways in which the pandemic influenced the real estate markets. So one of the first things that we really wanted to look at was really refreshing our thinking with regards to real estate trends and the impacts, some maybe near-term, some maybe longer term, from as a result of all the different things that we see confronting us in today, in today's marketplace and today's society in general. So really quickly, you know, we looked at, and we highlighted at the beginning in the report, some of the more salient issues that we think really impact the real estate markets going forward. So rapid evolution of technology, e-commerce, work from home, demographics and shifting preferences. I think that the United States demographic preferences and, and just demographic advancement over the next 10 years play out from a country perspective and play out here in the county. Housing and affordability, retail transformation. So obviously we know that, you know, we get, you know, the large share of what we shop, you know, used to go into physical stores to shop for in large part are now deliverable through e-commerce. And that has had really dramatic impacts on how the real estate sector functions as well as the industrial sector, which is another trend that you'll see a little later. Authentic placemaking in communities. So designing and thinking and envisioning communities that really pull authenticity, organic, that kind of stimulate organic growth from a community is a really key trend that all the experts and we like to think ourselves are really good at and, and focus our work on. That we're not doing cookie cutter approaches. We really dive into the roots of a local community to figure out what makes this community tick and the, in the development patterns and, and solutions that work. And then lastly, I mentioned industrial, you know, resiliency in the supply chain is really key and critical. We saw that play out in terms of how supply chains were functioning and had to adapt during, during the pandemic. And lastly, the impact of wildfires. It's something that, on real estate, it's something that we're, it's obviously something we need to consider today and into the future. So these are a handful of the, the lingering trends. From a demographic standpoint, I think the real thing to really look at is the green boxes and the blue bars going up. These are the areas in, in America, and we see it playing out in Placer County. These are the age groups that, that are rapidly driving population growth. And so we think a lot about what, what those age ranges need in terms of facilities and what their families are like, what their health conditions are like, what their consumer preferences are like. And that really drives our thinking as far as how the report goes. The demographics, this is a county when compared to California, both from the last 10 years that we experienced and into the future 10 years, this is a county whose growth, pop, you know, projections and growth history far exceeds the state as well as Sacramento County. And then so the feasibility report really boiled down to a very deep dive into demand and supply. Really, these feasibility reports at the end of the day, if I would explain them most simply, it, it really boils down to Economics 101, analyzing demand and analyzing supply. And from a demand standpoint, you look at population growth and you look at rents, both, you know, commercial rents, retail, industrial and residential rents or sales prices. Vacancy and competitive development in a region. And that, and these next couple of slides really just survey our findings from our demand analysis. And then I'll go later into the report into the supply side of the analysis. Just the economics, the development costs, underwriting standards that you see from the capital markets, the lenders and the, and, and investors. So from a residential standpoint, we see a lot of pent-up demand for residential. And, and, and we surveyed the types of property types. I mean, there's, there's just in Placer County in general, in the Auburn market, there's demand for, for sale, luxury custom homes, entry-level homes. And, and, and a lot of older, the, the market has a lot of older, lower-priced apartments. With, with office, office speculative development in office has been a little, it will obviously, not much speculative development in office has occurred in the last 10 years. Vacancies are relatively low, but you haven't seen much new supply occur into the, to the marketplace, not much growth there. Retail has been really hard hit due to the pandemic and the area, especially along the Highway 49 corridor, is pretty well-served with retail. And so we, we, obviously we surveyed rents, they're generally low vacancy. we, obviously, we surveyed rents, they're generally low vacancy, but you have a good install base of established retail there. So we looked at how can you diversify the retail or what other types of retail concepts would work that aren't already into the industry or in the marketplace. And then competitive development. It's a growing region, a lot of investors are interested in development throughout Placer County and Sacramento County, and so you compete with all the development that's generally occurring in a marketplace. From a supply standpoint, we looked at development costs. We ran pro formas across, you know, speculative development for multifamily, retail, and office. We looked at, from a feasibility standpoint, what rent levels would need to be achieved to support new development, new construction, and what the rent levels currently are. We found a little bit of a mismatch from some of that, and I'll talk a little about the strategy associated with the development from there. But in summary, what we found across, you know, the conclusions that we had from a feasibility standpoint are that, on the speculative development side, and again, we just looked simply at market rate analysis. We didn't factor in some of the policy constraints that are generally associated with development, like ground leasing or, you know, of range of, you know, achievable housing, moderate-income housing, workforce housing, and the like. But we found that, from a speculative development standpoint, for-sale, single-family homes and townhomes are probably the most financially feasible of new development. Market rate multifamily in the region is marginal, largely due to high construction costs. And then, obviously, workforce-affordable, senior multifamily, those types of housing, there's high demand for. We found that retail, office, and hotel development, from a spec standpoint, are not feasible, but we do see strategies in the build-to-suit markets for advancing well-placed, well-conceived, commercial development across those categories. And so that essentially is the conclusions. You know, I talk a little bit about the multifamily conclusions that we have in terms of, in terms of that being the highest and best-use type of development and the other types of risks associated with commercial development. We do think that build-to-suit development opportunities are more feasible in the near-term than spec development opportunities, and as more build-to-suit opportunities advance in the marketplace, you'll see more spec development opportunities come to be. So we think that the PCGC needs to compete on the basis of rent and price affordability for the amount of space that you get, as well as creating a really one-of-a-kind destination, an exciting destination, a place where people, when they are, they are in the Auburn market and nearby the Auburn market, they think to themselves, this is a really cool destination, you got to see this new development that's being developed at the PCGC. And so here's a good example of some of the things that we see. We think that, in order to create a destination, you really want to draw from the existing industries that are really, that are prevalent and are active and are successful in the region. And so we see lots of opportunities to create really special, kind of one-of-a-kind destinations, leveraging things like the F&amp;B production or food and beverage production opportunities in the marketplace, relying on health and wellness, recreation, all of these intrinsic aspects of your economy that can bolster development. And so the development strategies would be to refine the master plan to create a regionally unique destination, build-to-suit opportunities for commercial development, multifamily development across a variety of different income types, to keep construction costs as manageable as possible, prefabricated and modular building construction methods, and then, obviously, public-private partnerships to strategically attract more grant funding and to share risk with development partners. And so I think that that sums it up. These are some images that generally show the types of concepts that we envisioned as being workable. We had a rendering drawn up, which is based on how the existing PCGC master plan, so this is a rendering that, based upon a farm-to-table or farm-to-fork food and beverage type of theme that would make a lot of sense in the PCGC, and this is what it could ultimately look like. And then we also kind of envisioned some ideas about what health and wellness could look like, and redefining health and wellness more from a holistic definition of health and wellness. And so I think that is the presentation.
Great. Before you leave, a couple, at least I have a question.
Please.
So one, really compliment you on your work.
Thank you.
I enjoyed it very much, and I have a couple of questions. One was on the build-to-suit categories where you thought there might be feasibility.
Yeah.
And of course, if it's build-to-suit, then we're not the ones speculating.
Right.
But on the other hand, even if you had even a prominent company who we think has viability and intelligent approach to their business plan, I'm assuming, based on this, that you think that there's enough business viability, even though it's not something we would speculate on.
Yeah.
You do think there is enough business viability, a demand for retail, office, and hotel, if it was build-to-suit, and the expertise that those folks would bring to that market would sort of solidify the risk exposure?
Sure. Yeah, you know, that's a great question, and this is one of the challenges that you see in market studies, is that it's hard to speculate what the build-to-suit market's going to be, right? By very nature, that's, you know, it's conflicting, right? But we do think that there is enough interest in the marketplace, there's enough growth in the marketplace, and really just leveraging the relationships. We've been out there talking to potential partners, potential operators, potential, you know, companies that would want to invest in the region to know that there is enough interest in the marketplace and at this point. And it really is about getting the balance between affordability and construction costs. Construction costs are through the roof, and yet, and yet, Placer County and Auburn particularly is competing with, you know, with, you know, it has the same construction costs as downtown Sacramento, right? And the rent levels vary. So when you talk about secondary markets and tertiary markets to your primary market drivers, you have the same construction costs, but your rent levels and your prices are different. So to find that right balance, the risk is really about build-to-suit opportunities, and we just feel like the strategies that we have for prefab construction, for reaching out and envisioning what really makes the region a great place to be, leveraging F&amp;B, leveraging, you know, the health and wellness, you know, and leveraging the recreation activities that go on here. You can create something special, and there's enough business demand for that.
Great. So I think, yeah, just sort of test me, try to understand. So it sounds like, you know, devil is be in the details.
Sure.
But if somebody came forward with some proposal for something that sounds really exciting and desirous by us.
Right.
As we went through the evaluation with them, we would then be able to vet out the level of risk as it relates to anything we might do on behalf of the taxpayers.
Absolutely. That's the process that would be undertaken.
Thanks. And then, maybe you personally, or maybe we have some more economic-type people in the firm, but I think for the first time ever in my life, population, the state of California has decreased. And we know that Placer's been a hot real estate market for 30 or more years.
Yeah.
But do you, are there any, do you have any thoughts about how, and, you know, I think we know why a lot of folks are leaving, but any thoughts about connecting that dynamic to what we see in contrast here in Placer County over the longer run?
Yeah. One thing that's interesting, I just read, I follow a, an investor named Howard Marks, and he is the kind of luminary of Oak Tree Capital. And he writes a lot about risk, and he jokingly writes about economists and macroeconomic risk and basically saying that, you know, most people are not, you know, he kind of throws out the economist when they want to talk about macroeconomic risk in a lot of ways because it doesn't differentiate you from other investment strategies. It's just really hard to project macroeconomic risk. But from a, from a population growth standpoint, I think a lot of it, this is where developers come in, is we look at different regions and we say we believe in the long-term future of a particular market and a particular region. So even though en masse population out of California might be decreasing, we see that, what underlies that trend is not a trend of the whole state generally being, you know, the growth prospects for the state being unsustainable. It means that people are seeking value, and the value is occurring in more inland regions like Placer County and Sacramento, away from coastal markets like the Bay Area and Los Angeles. So that trend from your more coastal markets, the target destinations are Placer County. It is Dallas. It is Nashville, Tennessee. It is Salt Lake City. So you no longer really think about location as being fixed. You more think about it in terms of an economic profile. And the economic profile of Placer County has the same kind of value and intrinsics that Salt Lake City is offering or Dallas is offering. And that's how we generally say in our thesis is that Placer County has a lot of great potential ahead of it.
Great. Thank you. Cindy?
Thank you. I really enjoyed digesting this report.
Thank you.
I will tell you, it's very detailed. One question I had is you had ratings for office, retail, and I'm not, I'm familiar with five stars for hotels.
Right.
But not for offices.
Right.
So can you define for me those, because we have a missing element in the Auburn area in the four and five-star.
Right.
Office space.
Sure. And another way to think about that would just be similar, you hear oftentimes in the office or retail sector, class A, class B, class C.
Okay.
And so class A would be new development in, say, downtown Sacramento. Class, I don't know, A-, B+ might be the best things that, the new development that's occurring, probably in Roseville. And then, most of the product that you have in Auburn right now is probably class B. Anything new would be ranked class B+. And then you can generally take, you know, that rubric from A-, B+, B-, B-, and you can associate stars, one star to five stars, kind of generally, but there's no real key rule of thumb there. What you do see is that, even if you were to build, say, brand-new office, you know, the class A is going to be more like creative office with large floor plates that are going to attract tech tenants. And speculative, that's going to be really difficult because it's not, you know, the truth is, those, that tenant base, the investors who take that risk want to see adjacencies to business clusters and universities. And so a build-to-suit strategy is to start working with the universities and the incubators to build that kind of core, underlying infrastructure in a marketplace. And then you start down the road to attract more of that spec development, which is probably in a second phase. So during this next economic cycle, a build-to-suit strategy would be really wise in order to start to attract more spec development in the next economic cycle.
Thank you. It was really a thorough report, and I think the evaluation of the Auburn areas that relates to our county demographically, income-wise, and the lack of better office space really indicates the need or desire to do something really innovative here at this site.
Right.
To drive, hopefully, the poverty rates down and the median incomes up, as well as providing more housing. So I see that. Key to a lot of folks that we've heard from over the last year is Building 315, the theater, as well as the community center concept. And do you see those integrating into the government center project as you look at it?
Yeah.
Is that, can that be part of this solution?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. I mean, we think that the theater component, as well as the DeWitt Heritage Center, what's nice is that there's a lot of opportunities for mixing cultural and community-based facilities with the commercial, build-to-suit commercial or residential types of concepts that we've been exploring.
Great.
And it only makes for a better place, right? That's where you draw the authenticity. That's the stuff that we're talking about, and that's, you know, what we like to say is a differentiator that we focus on.
Yeah. So I see that clearly as well, but I know there's a lot of concern about that, as well as certainly our need for new multifamily housing of all income levels.
Sure.
Especially at our moderate levels. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then Paul, we're going to take these both together, so I'm assuming you're going to brief on the second part.
I'm going to actually have Karen Boulay come up and talk to that component, so.
I'm wrong again?
Sorry.
Thank you, Paul. Am I there? Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And I'll be quick. I know it's been a long morning. And I don't, let's see, here we are. Okay. My name's Karen Boulay, and I'm with Real Estate Services, and I'm here bringing the, kind of the nuts and bolts to get them started on their project at the PCGC. We're here asking the board to approve an exclusive right to negotiate with Griffin Swinerton as the master developer to analyze designs and financial feasibility of the multiple development alternatives at the 50-acre private development site at the PCGC or the Placer County Government Center. And we're asking that the board authorize the Director of Facilities Management or designee to execute the agreement and implement and do all things necessary to implement its terms. So you've heard the background here. We are here to tell you that the county and Griffin Swinerton desire to enter into this agreement to allow Griffin Swinerton sufficient time to perform due diligence and site investigation for their detailed planning and to develop site concepts and alternatives in layouts at the PCGC or the private development area, including infrastructure and analysis of the PCGC master plan and the adjustments to optimize that site. So the key terms will be first to, for the negotiation of real estate agreements, for the development of the build-to-suit. So that would be the primary goal of the exclusive right to negotiate. The term is going to be for two years. The will be a term extension, and that will be six months by written agreement. That's on the board. In lieu of consideration, they will provide, Griffin Swinerton will provide copies of their work product, their reports, and studies related to the physical condition of the site. And the, and mine are a bit out of order with respect to what's on the board, but the, let me see what, so the, Griffin Swinerton will collaborate with the county in obtaining grant funds for development at the site, and so their expenditures will be paid from those grant funds. They are actually working right now with a contract with Cedra, so their invoicing will be through Cedra, but they will be working to obtain grant funding, and they'll be invoicing against those grant funds received. And they'll be working with the county to develop those funds. The performance benchmarks that are key for this contract is that they will be advising and assisting the county in developing and providing financial analysis for the affordable housing component and for economic funding opportunities. So they'll be helping the county prepare grant applications in those, on those topics. They'll be preparing financial projections, supporting the county for the grant applications in the housing and economic and federal infrastructure dollars. So they'll be key to helping the county do that. They'll be completing conceptual design plans for the development alternatives that they propose, and they'll be obtaining a subconsultant. They'll be required under the contract to obtain a subconsultant that has expertise in affordable housing, and they'll be required to procure that subconsultant to assist the county in moving forward with that and using their proposal process, Griffin Swinerton's. And finally, they'll be preparing the submission of site concept plans, showing how the proposed development connects and integrates with the infrastructure and roadways and facilities at the PCGC. And we talked about Building 315 or the theater building. That will be actually excluded, that area, and the adjacent grounds will be excluded from their area of their exclusive right to negotiate of the 50 acres. But they will be required to include that, that area in their site plans and incorporate it into their development goals. They will, the theater, the DC, what is it, the DeWitt Community Complex personnel or people are aware that we're here today. They are not prevented from working with Griffin Swinerton or reaching out to Griffin Swinerton. Swinerton to to be part of this development process or to come up with them with ideas. So and Griffin Swinerton stands ready to work with them. In fact, they were happy to hear about that. So the last part of it of the agreement is that there's a right to terminate and this is a right to terminate by convenience and it's a 14-day right to terminate, so with a written notice. And the funding to negotiate this is in the Real Estate Services Division Fiscal Year 21, 22 adopted budget. And with that, I would say if there's any questions, but we have such great people here to answer. If there's any questions.
Questions by board members at this time. Bonnie?
Yes, thank you. Question about the funding for the master developer. Here it says that funds will be, and you mentioned that any grants they receive and funds would come from those grants, correct? Right?
Right.
But what if no grants are received? So how are they paid?
We're going to defer to Shawna. Shawna's going to.
Good morning, Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency. So the county is in receipt of two grants already, about $225,000 split between some residential and non-residential technical assistance through the state Housing and Community Development Agency. So that will be the, that'll be the start. And then they'll work with us to continue to apply for funding as we go forward and that funds will be used to help with the payment of Griffin Swinerton's work, separate apart from, you know, future developments and then that will come as through those negotiations.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Seeing other questions, comments from board members, anyone from the public like to address this item?
Ramona, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. My name is Ramona Brockman and I am the president of the DeWitt Community Complex and thank you for hearing this item. And as many of you know, or new people may not, our mission as a DeWitt Community Complex is to reuse key iconic historic DeWitt hospital buildings for public use. And as you know, also many of our members of our group have been engaged with the county through the master plan process and even before that for many years to retain and reuse important and iconic historic DeWitt buildings and incorporate them into the Placer County Government Center's future. And I'd like to make a few comments and questions. One I noticed is that the private development area was re-designated from what was shown in the PCGC master plan and I'm curious as to why that re-designation happened. The area now for private development includes the for the chapel and for adjoining patient ward buildings. And I think you kind of answered this or or someone answered this, that these historic buildings, it sounds like will be, or there's emphasis to incorporate them into the private development area and retain them as a historic district. And I'd like to just make sure that I heard that correctly. And then I would also like to emphasize that retaining and renovating key historic DeWitt buildings does fit into the development strategy as described by Griffin Swinerton in the staff report. The DeWitt Theater, the Auditorium and the chapel, as well as the four adjoining patient wards are existing historic buildings that contribute to the DeWitt Center or Placer County Government Center's sense of place. And reuse of these buildings for public use and recreation as part of a mixed-use development is obviously beneficial since historic buildings provide authentic placemaking. Historic buildings are always a proven placemaker strategy. From this, from its inception, DeWitt Hospital was designed as a community where people lived, worked and played. Reusing the theater, auditorium and chapel historic district would carry DeWitt's significant history into the future in a relevant and meaningful way. Reusing the DeWitt Theater, Auditorium and Chapel District for public uses would act as demand generators, drawing residents, visitors and businesses into the area. For example, reopening the DeWitt Theater as a community theater would attract residents and visitors to its events and provide a customer base for cafes, wine bars or breweries, ice cream shops and boutiques, stores. And reusing the auditorium as an event center would attract visitors and residents to a multitude of events, including health and wellness talks, farm-to-fork dinners, private parties and weddings that local businesses such as catering, photographers and florists would benefit from. An example of this kind of synergy obviously would be the Blue Goose Auditorium in Loomis that really has really developed quite a vibrant scene for restaurants and other businesses that are up and coming in a very, very small town. The chapel is already occupied, as you know, and has been used as a spiritual center.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, could you wrap up your comments, please?
Sure. Anyway, so incorporating all of these would make a lot of sense and we do acknowledge that from this meeting that the DCC can contact Griffin and Swinerton and we look forward to opening this line of communication. And I do hope that Griffin and Swinerton does include the community and the community views and wishes in their design for this area. Thank you for your consideration.
Placer Community One, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, it's Veronica Blake at Placer Community Foundation. Just a couple of quick comments. Absolutely delighted to see that the county is considering more affordable housing on this location, very similar to the Mercy project, which we believe to be extremely successful.
I'm sorry, could you, we're having a hard time hearing you. Could you speak up a little bit, please?
Is this any better, Robert?
Yeah, that's better, thanks.
Okay, I leaned in. All right, so my question is really, can we hear a little bit more about the firm's experience with affordable housing and also when they plan to bring in their affordable housing subcontractor? And also just wondering when, how the community will be able to give input to the project. But we are delighted to see that affordable workforce housing is on the radar screen. Thanks so much.
Thanks. And do you have an answer to the affordable housing component?
Did you want me to answer that?
Sure.
Yes, okay, so the Griffin Swinerton's experience, he's, they've worked extensively with other affordable housing developers. So they intend to have a partnership with, for example, Mercy or Related or some other developer that they will work with to develop that. And I don't have a timeline for when that is expected, but that will be part of when they're doing the development site plans and and moving forward with this.
Well, and in that we go forward, I think there'd be ample opportunity to inform us and the public as to where there would be times to, for people like anyone interested in that issue to be able to actually plug into it. So thanks.
Absolutely.
And then on the other question about the component in DeWitt that we're going to continue to work with, there was a question on that, if you heard that, can you respond to that one also?
Would you?
Yeah, so Ramona's question, yes, that that is accurate, that we will be considering that as part of the master planning effort. So the upper one, 100 ramp is part of the DeWitt Heritage Area, has four of the older, what would be the.
Barracks.
Thank you, the barracks and the chapel. So yeah, that will be kind of built into their efforts on the the master planning side. And yeah, as far as the community input, you know, we'll be going to kind of the traditional formats, North Auburn Max in particular, to to provide some feedback as to, I I think some really interesting, cool concepts that Griffin is bringing forward.
Thanks, Paul.
Sure.
Anyone else? Anything else, Karen?
That's all.
Okay. So the question before us now is, we've gotten the update and we have the right to negotiate agreement in front of us. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second, Guffsterson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. So, yeah, thank you. Why don't we go to our 11 o'clock timed item, which is to be short, but I see the cap, our chief Estes is here and Sheriff Bell are here. So why don't we do this other one first and we'll get that off our list and then we'll do you guys right afterward, if that's okay? Yes?
Hi. Good morning, Chair Wiegand and board members. Sarah Gellmore with Environmental Engineering and this is going to be short. I'm here to present the annexation of the Esposito property. As stated in the board memo, we're requesting the board open a public hearing to adopt the resolution, which is included in the staff report, to annex the Esposito property located as APN 036085021 into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District 3, Horseshoe Bar. This property is located east of Auburn Folsom Road on La Maida Lane in Loomis and it consists of approximately 4.9 acres. The current annexation fee for reimbursement into SMD 3 or Sewer Maintenance District 3 is, and Horseshoe Bar, is $4,440 per EDU. This property could potentially be divided into four and therefore a total of $17,760 would be collected. Staff supports the request and in order to move forward, we request that your board open the public hearing and adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex the property into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District 3, Horseshoe Bar.
Thanks.
Available for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, board members? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring the resolution back to the board for consideration.
I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Motion Gore, second, Guffsterson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll go back to the second part or the first part of our supplemental item, which is an update on the river fire and I see Chief Estes and Sheriff Bell here and however you guys want to come forward is fine with us.
Well, thank you, Chair Wiegand, members of the board, CEO, county council. Thank you very much for your time this morning. I'm going to open up our our short presentation and then turn it over to Sheriff Bell, which is really kind of indicative of the way we have worked together as partner agencies through the entire entirety of this incident. And I know many of you over the last four days have been out on the fire, including up until yesterday. And so, you know, we very much appreciate that support from all of you. So let's see if we can, I think we're waiting for the PowerPoint here. I probably won't be able to speak to that one.
I'll bet you could.
I'll give, I'll give it a, I'll give it a try. Huh? Okay, no problem. Just, you know, the way we're going to do the briefing this morning really is I will present a kind of an operational overview, where we've been, where we are now and what we're looking at over the next really three to four days and specifically where we will end up Friday. And then I'm going to let Sheriff Bell handle all the information about the evacuation of people and the current repopulation efforts and recovery efforts. So the river fire. What you can see right there, and again, I'm Brian Estes, I'm the county and state fire chief, and I appreciate your time again. What you see here is a topographic map of the fire area. And I'll just kind of walk you through a little bit of where the fire started and where it ended before we get into some of the statistics. So a- as you can see by the shape of the fire, that this fire was really driven by the topography and the fuels of the Bear River drainage. We are obviously in a drought condition right now and there was a red flag warning to the north of Placer and Nevada Counties prior to this fire starting, but we weren't actually in a red flag warning in the county. And what that means to all of us is that we were seeing what I would consider to be normal summertime conditions. And we'll, we'll see that in the, in in some of the weather stats in the follow-up slides. But the shape of this fire really shows that it followed the topography of the Bear River drainage, which happens to be one of our target hazards in Placer County, along with the North Fork of the American River. The Bear River drainage really is a significant issue to us primarily because of the city of Colfax and the impact to the communities along the Interstate 80 corridor as well as the 174 corridor. So as you look at the shape of the fire, you'll see that it did start and was reported in the Bear River Campground on March 4th at 2:00 in the afternoon. The fire progressed really and made most of its progression and acreage spread in the first 24 hours. And it did follow the terrain and topography of the Bear River drainage. Our original control objectives and and essentially that box that we like to draw around a fire in order to to build our original containment lines, our original box was to keep the fire north of the Bear River Campground, to keep the fire west of Highway 174, to keep the fire east of Dog Bar Road in Nevada County and to keep the fire south of Crossing 174. Within two hours of the burning conditions and experiencing spotty, spotting in excess of a half to three quarters of a mile, we extended that control line and built a new contingency plan, which still kept the south end of the fire at Bear River Campgrounds, but extended the east side to the Interstate 80 corridor, the west side to Highway 49 and the north side to north of Rollins Lake Reservoir. At the time that those control objectives were given to me by the incident commander, I I estimated that the potential size of this fire could have been 17,000 to 19,000 acres and I think there would have been a realistic impact to in excess of 2,000 residences in Placer and Nevada Counties. So as we look at the stats and as you've seen this week, through a little bit of luck and a tremendous amount of good leadership on the fire lines and great work from all the fire crews from both the state and local levels, we were able to stop progression of the fire at about 2,400 hours that first evening, 12:00 midnight at 174 and Mount Olive Road, which is a tremendous effort and a tremendous success for us. And as we talk a little bit in the following slides, you'll see that we had some things work in our favor through that first afternoon. So the current statistics of the fire is that we burned 2,619 acres. The fire is currently, as of this morning's intel report, 72% contained. I know they've actually upda- updated that to 78% as of about 10 minutes ago. And our glide path is to see this fire at 100% containment by Friday morning at 0800 hours. 66 residential structures have been destroyed and that's been split almost 50, well, 50/50 between Placer and Nevada County, 33 on each side of the river. The Bear River, as you all know, is the county line between Placer and Nevada Counties. We had two commercial structures destroyed, 20 outbuildings destroyed and 20 residential structures that were damaged by the fire. As I said, we were not under a wind-driven red flag condition on the day of the fire. And so the conditions we did see was a typical hot summer day in Placer County. 96 degrees, about 14% relative humidity, two to four mile-per-hour winds coming out of the southwest, very typical for the afternoon. One of the, one of the issues we are seeing from the drought, though, is is the next couple of bullet points. The ignition component was 87. And as we talked about yesterday, the easiest way to explain that is if I throw 100 matches out into a dry field, 87 of those would have started new fires. The higher that number is in comparison to 100, the more critical your spotting is. And in the fire service, any relative humidity below 20%, we know that we're going to get spotting. Outside of a wind-driven event, the number one spread of fires and damage to structures comes from the fire spotting out in front of itself. And the river fire was spotting anywhere from one half to one mile in front of itself as it moved progression through the Bear River drainage. And the last bullet point is important to know as well, we were in the 97 percentile of an energy release component. So that means that the energy contained in the vegetative fuels, brush and timber, was in the 97 percentile over 100-year recorded history, which means essentially that only three years in the last 100 years have we recorded the kind of energy stored in those fuels, primarily from fuel loading and drought conditions. Our resource commitment at the height of the fire, which was really the second operational period, consisted of 1,100 firefighters assigned to the incident, 93 fire engines from across the state, 32 fire hand crews, 27 fire dozers. We set our incident command post and base at the Gold Country Fairgrounds, which were just wonderful cooperators with us and we were serving in excess of 2,000 meals per day. As I, as I, as I conclude the end of my presentation and turn it over to Sheriff Bell, those are just firefighting resources. I think you'll hear from the sheriff that that he had all hands on deck from the sheriff's office. And we've talked a lot about the the allied decision-making process of unified command and all the training and effort we have put into that over the past few years, but that we really did write the check to pay the bills on this incident. And I can tell you firsthand, and this is my 31st year in the fire service, and I can tell you with certainty that those coordinated relationships do not exist everywhere. And the public expects it and the public deserves it. And I think that our relationships between Cal Fire, County Fire and the Placer County Sheriff's Office is giving the public exactly what they deserve to the highest level of professionalism when it comes to the evacuation and repopulation of of the communities. Another little bit of luck that we had was through some. Another little bit of luck that we had was through some negotiations with our geographical Command Center in Redding. The river fire was placed as the number-one priority in the state for about an hour and a half. And that was due to the imminent life threat to the city of Colfax. With that, all aviation resources that were assigned to the Dixie Fire and others were diverted to the river fire to contain the fire spread from Colfax and also on the Nevada side into Altisir and Lake of the Pines. What that meant was 15 air tankers were assigned through that operational period, including three of the DC-10s that you see in this picture. We had seven helicopters, including the helicopter that's been recently stationed at Auburn Headquarters was the first helicopter at scene of this fire. Two of our air attack platforms and a combined almost 300,000 gallons of retardant dropped on day one and 147,000 gallons of water dropped through the incident. Our Grass Valley Air Attack Base turned 47 loads of retardant to our CAL FIRE air tankers with an average 11-minute turnaround time from the time those aircraft came into the pits to the time they were rotating back into the air, which is just an amazing effort from our crews. Our current status as we sit this morning is that our crews are out there securing control lines, mopping up, ensuring that everything is in good shape. We're heavily engaged in fire line suppression, repair, roads that may have been damaged. Any private property that we caused, we will repair at no cost to the property owner. We're doing our DINs inspection in coordination with the sheriff's office and the county, and that operation is just about wrapped up. And that's the damage inspection of private property and structures. Already, you've probably seen a lot of equipment on the road as resources are demobilized. They're going to other incidents immediately. I saw in excess of 15 inches headed out this morning en route to the Dixie Fire. And we will be in what we call tactical patrol by Friday, August 14th, which means we'll be truly in patrol status. In totality, we were very fortunate, and as a fire chief, this is the stuff that keeps me up at night, is injury to the civilians in our communities and injuries to my own folks. And we were fortunate to only have one firefighter injury and two civilian injuries, all minor through the incident. As of this morning, total suppression costs are $8.9 million, fully borne by the state of California as this fire was, local jurisdiction for fire was with Placer County Fire Department and City of Colfax, and the state jurisdiction was 100% CAL FIRE. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Sheriff Devin Bell, to talk about evacuations and repopulation.
Before you do that, though, Brian, just, I think, public should know and I'd like to emphasize, at Town Hall meeting up in Colfax on Saturday night, of course, had a chance to exchange some of this, but it sounds to me like one of the greatest things that served us well was the early decision-making that brought in what I think of as an air force.
Yeah.
When I went to bed, I talked about how I expected the worst when I woke up and there was 2,500 acres had burned and that there were only like 400 more acres
Right.
That burned from the time that I went to bed from the time that I got up.
Right.
Which sounds miraculous to me, but not, you articulated the resources on your screen as to how many tankers, et cetera, were there, but just managing that amount of air traffic at night in smoke, it sounds to me to be amazing. And if you could just touch on that a bit.
Yeah. You know, on the aviation side, we actually had two of our, what we call air attacks or aerial supervision modules that were overhead of the fire. And one of them was just dealing with the fixed-wing air tankers. There were so many of them, it was such a complicated airspace. And if you think about it, that is kind of an air traffic controller in the sky. That's what they were doing. And, you know, at any given time, the CAL FIRE Battalion Chief in the back of that airplane is monitoring between seven and nine radio frequencies continuously. And all the only break they're getting is when they get back to get fuel. And so, it's an incredibly stressful job. I actually caught our air attack chief driving home at 2:00 in the morning at the roundabout in Colfax, and we stopped there and shared a bottle of water and I let him debrief a little bit. He was at the end of his rope, I will tell you, but tremendous success. And, you know, the other thing that I'm just very, very proud of is we had all the right players in place. We had our local battalion chief in Colfax was on duty, who's lived there for 30 years, his command staff, you know, my deputy chief who grew up just over the river, all the right people were in place. Captain Wright was right there with us at the back of the command post. And I will say that that was some of the luck we had, was the right people in the right place, the decision-making, not having to build that relationship with someone on the hood of the pickup, but having that trust in someone already made the decision-making so much easier. So, yeah, really a pretty amazing afternoon and evening.
Yeah. So, thanks again, Brian, to you and your people. And in concert with that was an amazing evacuation because sadly, in today's reality, Colfax could have become another paradise. So, Sheriff Bell, looking forward to hearing your update.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Weigant. Ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen of the board, County Council, Todd, good to see you this morning. Want to talk a little bit about our response. I will tell you in a nutshell, our role is centered around notification, evacuation, repopulation, and as the mutual aid coordinator on the law enforcement side. So, in the initial response, the chief mentioned luck. Luck, sometimes it better be lucky than good. We had luck break our way as well. This fire broke loose on an overlap day when we had all hands on deck for training. So, we were very fortunate. Within an hour of the initial report of fire, we had 58 deputy sheriffs on scene. And normally, that number would be less than half of that. So, we were very, very fortunate in that this fire happened when it did. Part of our ability to respond was based on our take-home car program. The issue is generally not having enough deputy sheriffs, it's having enough cars and equipment to get them on scene. You've been supportive of that program in the past. It definitely paid dividends on this day, and I'd ask for your continued support of that program in the future. On scene, Unified Command declared early on at the command post, Placer County, CAL FIRE, and Nevada County Sheriff's Office were our partners. I'm going to talk a little bit about our evacuation effort specific to the Placer County side. We evacuated 3,400 households were under an evacuation order, meaning you have to go. And an additional 1,470 were under warnings, which means you need to be ready to go. One of the nice things during this entire process was our HHS partners. It's one thing to tell people you need to go, and it's another thing for them to have a place to go. Very early on, HHS provided us temporary evacuation shelters for people to go to, which is incredibly helpful. I will say with a couple of notable outliers, the community was extremely supportive of our efforts to get them notified and evacuated. Next slide.
Next slide.
Next slide.
Yeah.
Ah, it's on me. Mass notification. We used a number of techniques to push out this information. We, on the Placer County side, use Everbridge. We've used it for years successfully to push out information to our community. As the event continued to evolve, we turned heavily towards our social media platforms, including Facebook and Twitter. And as the incident stabilized and we were able to actually push out video, we used successfully YouTube as well. Our high-low siren, which you may remember, was pushed through and ratified within the last year, was extensively used within the evacuation area, as was public address systems. And door-to-door, and we didn't knock on every door, we didn't have enough staff to do that. That is based on available staff and risk factors. Those people in the highest-risk areas, we were knocking on doors and saying, "You need to go." We patrolled within the evacuation areas for 24 hours, even after people get repopulated to make sure that they are safe in there. Right now, even we have, even though things are starting to open back up, we have six to eight deputy sheriffs providing tactical patrols within that burn area to provide security for our impacted residents. We did have an arrest from a subject who did not belong in the evacuation area. I won't speculate as to his motive in a public forum, but he went to jail. And I also want to tip my hat to our CHP partners. They definitely stepped up to the plate and were very instrumental in causing, you know, doing the road closures so my deputy sheriffs were available to handle the evacuations in the area. Obviously, very quickly, as we're evacuating, we're already developing our repopulation plan. And we're pretty aggressive about it and not, we don't ever, it's about balance. We don't want to put people in danger, but we recognize the impact that it has on people and we want them to be able to get back into their homes as soon as possible. To tell you, we had two, three, two or three meetings a day to mitigate all of those safety hazards, and it's not just what the sheriff has to say. We need to get utilities involved, water, fire, HHS, OES. We need all of our partners communicating with us to ensure that it's safe for people to get back into that area. To tell you, the evacuation was lifted within the first 12 hours, the warnings, and we were able to start repopulating households within 48 hours, which is amazing, given the significance of this fire. Repopulating the remaining zones started yesterday, and we have almost everybody repopulated at this time. Deputy sheriffs are providing escorts for those people going back into the area. We figure we were the last face they saw telling them to leave. We want to be the first face they see leading them back in to their homes and their communities. Next slide, please. See if I can do this. Okay. Placer County Dispatch. We received 293 911 calls relevant to this event and for a total of 905 calls, many, most of those non-emergency. On a typical day, we receive 170 911 calls. Our dispatch center was significantly impacted and they did a yeoman's job managing those calls for service as they were coming in and gathering the intelligence that deputy sheriffs needed in order to attack this fire and these evacuations effectively. Chief Estes referred to this. Our unified command training that we have done consistently with CAL FIRE and my office paid dividends. It's about having those relationships in place before you need them and being able to speak, quite frankly, the same language, not, you know, in training and not trying to figure out what we're talking about in the middle of the incident. It was a tremendous help. And he also referenced the pre-incident Colfax targeting hazard planning that we did. Those maps were extensively used. They were key to our success. And our mobile command vehicle rolled out and that is, I think, everybody on the DAS has had an opportunity to at least see that center. It is an amazing piece of technology that allows us to not only manage information, but GIS information, but also communications. And it was a huge success. So, we evacuated 3,400 people within three hours of this event, of the initial report. We were able to repopulate 1,920 within 48 hours, 3,320 within 72 hours, and 3,400 people were repopulated as of yesterday afternoon. Some, as I'm wrapping this up, I just got to say for my staff how proud I am of the men and women in the dispatch center and on the, in the patrol cars that rolled out to help. Quite frankly, this is something we trained for that we hope never comes, but it did. And they did a spectacular job. And that we got out of here with minimal injuries and no fatalities on such a rapidly evolving incident is a testament to CAL FIRE and their fire partners and the men and women of the sheriff's office in the California Highway Patrol. That's the end of my report unless you have any questions of me.
Thanks, Devin. Again, great work and our highest thanks to all of you and your folks and the fact that you all work together. But, anyway, Cindy?
Oh, questions?
Or comments or...
And comments. For the chief first, we were lucky in a lot of ways, but a lot of skill and leadership went into the command decisions that got us the aerial support, obviously. But for the purposes of the public, to understand, had it been a red flag day, had we experienced the kinds of winds we saw in Tahoe during the Angora Fire or in some of the other tragic fires we've seen, it could have been so much worse and so quickly escalated. But yesterday, we got a timeline that I have forgotten, and I don't know if you remember, how long it was from the time Chief Egan was at the site to the time it was spotting up the hill at the first houses. It was minutes.
Yeah, I believe it was within about eight or nine minutes. You know, by the time that Chief Egan arrived at the initial ICP was about 2:15 and I believe by, you know, 2:25 or so, they were reporting those initial structures on Spring Valley Road were being directly impinged by spot fires. So, yeah, the spotting was almost immediate, and I think that speaks to that energy release component that I talked about. You know, we're in that, we're in a condition we've only seen really, you know, 3% of the time in the last 100 years. So, we really can't take anything for granted. And I think if you were to add any sort of red flag conditions windwise behind that fire, I venture to say we probably would not be having this presentation today.
Right. Well, you know, and the knowledge of your staff on both parts, both the sheriff's office as well as fire, having that firsthand knowledge of our communities and the terrain, topography, and having planned so well together, we can't thank you all enough for that knowledge and expertise and leadership that we got to see firsthand and really appreciate that. And I know you're still ongoing with investigations. That is one of the top questions I get asked. And we've already had some suggestions today and through emails about evacuation processes in the future and notifications outside of, that we can go back to later. But for right now, just thank you for everything that was done. And if you have any insight on the investigation.
Yeah, thank you. And as far as the, my arson investigators were on scene within about one hour of the start of the fire, had the scene secured and starting their preliminary, what we call cause and origin. That brought in a regional task force to enhance the investigation. I would say that investigation, the fire department's side, is probably about 75% complete, but there's going to be potentially weeks, if not months, of analysis of the statements and evidence and et cetera, et cetera. So, I really, I don't want to give that standard under investigation answer. I want to try to give you a little bit more, but I think it's realistically going to be at least a month before we see a release on the cause of the fire.
Thank you. And thank you again. We can't thank you enough.
Suzanne, then Jim.
I wanted to thank you for taking us on the tour yesterday, spending so much time with us and showing us everything. I think I probably speak on behalf of the rest of the board that we are in awe of what you all do, so many people, so many pieces of equipment. I mean, 1,100 firefighters, 93 fire engines, 32 fire hand crews, seven helicopters, 15 air tankers, and how the sheriff and fire and everybody coordinates with all of this, I mean, thousands of evacuees and everything. When I was a kid, we had a small fire in our garage. And I mean, we came home from church to this and we were just so devastated, you know, losing our precious little property and our memories. But when we went on that tour yesterday, to see those houses gone, and I've heard people and seen them on TV talking about losing everything, everything. We saw toys and children's play toys out there. You know, my heart really goes out to everybody and thank you. Would have been great and wonderful if we could have saved everybody's home, but I know there's no way we can. And I think they really appreciate it as well as we do. And speaking about notification, we did have one lady telling us today that Nevada County has some program. I don't know what it is, but she said that it was kind of, she thought was very good for notification. So, maybe we can find out about that. But I think you guys have done an amazing job. Thank you all.
Jim?
Again, to both of you, great, great job.
Again, to both of you, great, great job. I can't emphasize enough the importance of your unified command training, both you, Chief Estes and Sheriff Bell and your staffs. I drive by Station 180 periodically and see the amount of training that you put into that, and that has made the difference in this whole success of this operation. I have to commend Chief Egan for being prepared for years about if this ever happened. He knew exactly what needed to happen, and I think that was a key to getting ahead of that terrible incident that happened. And I can't go without saying, the air attack commander, Crusoe, is that his name?
Yep.
He gave a presentation a couple, three or four weeks ago to one of my organizations. It's unbelievable, the complexity of what that man has to do to keep all those planes in the air and keep them going. It's, people don't understand the immense training that goes into that just to be prepared for incidents like this. So just thank you both and through your staffs. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And Bonnie?
Yes, thank you. I can't say a whole lot more than what my colleagues have already said, but thank you. I do think it's such a good reminder for our residents that when they're told to evacuate, do it. Because when we were up there, it was really clear that people could have easily lost their lives if they hadn't evacuated. So thank you to you and your team for getting that done and working together. And then it was also a really good reminder about the defensible space, and we'll continue to have conversations about that. But you could see areas where some homes were saved because they had more defensible space and hardening of homes. And so as we continue to address these issues of wildfire in the future, you know, we'll talk about this, but I think we clearly have some examples of why folks need to look at defensible space and evacuate as soon as authorities tell them to. So kudos to our residents for listening and thank you again for the hard work that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. I'll just add one last thing because I can't help myself. But the board here will also continue to elevate actually our conversation about proper forest management and how the county is looking to become a leader in trying to pull those resources together so that we don't have smoky air for two to six months out of the year, every year. Even if we put it in a good place, fire breaks, it's not going to prevent the massive burns that are occurring like we currently are seeing in the state. It's only going to get worse every year until we properly start managing these forests well. So I'll finish up with that, and then I have to open it up to the public for any comments that they might have.
My name is Karen Perry, and I am here today, first and foremost, for the Bear River. And I am also a milk ranch property owner. And I ask for your leeway and grant me a little bit more time and respect for what has just happened to my neighborhood and community if I need it. I'm here for the animals and the creatures who lost their homes and don't have a voice. And so I'm here for them first. The Bear River is my backyard. I have, I live where I live because of that place, and I have worked tirelessly for the past decade to do what I can to defend that area. Anybody in the county has heard from me. The Board of Supervisors has heard from me. Andy Fisher has heard from me. Cindy Gustafson is nodding her head. Jennifer Montgomery before her knows how much myself, my husband, have been involved in trying to protect this place that Placer County runs, mismanages, and operates where this fire started and didn't have to. This was a preventable fire. I am here for Placer County to finally listen because you have been warned repeatedly. And I have a stack of emails that I brought with me today that you have all gotten with information, and I'm going to read some of that to you today. It started, this is, this goes back a year, starting July 7, 2020. And when you opened, when you chose to open the campground again last year during COVID, I had very real concerns about how that was happening and how it was being done. So I had communicated then. And in the process of that exchange, Andy Fisher wrote this to me. "I also want to mention, our Board of Supervisors just approved a budget with funding for additional vegetation management for wildfire risk reduction at Bear River Campground. So we will be working with CAL FIRE to develop additional shared fuel breaks to get the best wildfire protection possible. We also have instituted our annual ban on campfires for the remainder of the camping season." So I thought, great. That was July 2020. Moving ahead, the next email that you will see is from me in a thread that I titled "Two Very Risky Fire Issues." It was copied to the Board of Supervisors. And this thread began on October 6 because I was so concerned because I hadn't seen any of this fuel reduction work done. I literally go down there almost every day. I know what happens down there. "Just to reiterate, the county is operating a campground in high fire area right next to a very risky matchstick grove of dead trees. Despite the signage banning live fires, we see evidence of rogue fire pits and recent usage in some of the designated pits. There is thigh-high dry vegetation too close to camping areas and along the road where dirt bikes illegally zoom back and forth. There are also more live-in RVs taking up permanent residence like Joe and his dog Murphy, who have lived on Plum Tree Road for over a year and a half now. You may recall there was a fire on Plum Tree Road several years ago requiring retardant drop that was started by an RV. The county is literally playing with fire, putting many lives and properties at risk." That was from October 6.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you could finish up your comment, please.
I think this is really important that you hear this.
It actually is important in that, you know, we're available for meetings, we're available to communicate in a variety of different ways, but we cannot take all day long for everybody to talk and not conduct our business also.
I almost lost my home because of the negligence of this county and the mismanagement of this facility and something that could have been prevented. So I will jump ahead because you're all going to get a copy to read this, but I will jump ahead because that matchstick grove we went and visited and got the county to come out and take a look at, and it's still there because it didn't burn down. And so I got this from Casey on July 8, 2020, 2021, from Casey Lyons, who is in charge of the campground down there, supervising parks and grounds worker. "I wanted to let you know that I have taken your concerns regarding Campbell Creek Canyon into consideration, and we're going to shift our efforts to help mitigate the fire risk on that side of the property. Since we've just about finished the 13.5 acres above day use, I'm able to have our goat and sheep grazer shift over to Campbell Creek, and we're going to start knocking back some of that vegetation. My plan is to have the goats and sheep graze down the area enough that we can get crews down in there to fell the majority of the standing dead. As you know, that Campbell Creek area is super thick with blackberries, but the grazer and I think we can get it good enough for crews to work down in there. We'll be running fences for the animals soon, so you should see a difference within a week or two. Campbell Canyon, as well as the area above campsites 1 through 4, are our top priority list. I do appreciate your insight and have taken your concerns into consideration during planning future projects." That work never got done above campsites 1 through 4. I am also here to let you know that you all got really lucky, as you've heard today, incredibly lucky. And keeping that campground open while I support a day-use park that is managed and supervised well, I do not support overnight camping in a high-fire risk zone that has just been made clear by CAL FIRE is too risky for the town of Colfax, for the schools, and for the residents who live there. And I ask that the campground, the overnight portion of the campground, never reopen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Out of respect for your time and everyone's time, and I obviously want to thank the heroic effort to stop this fire. This is not about blame-laying. This is about accountability and looking forward. So I'm just going to skip ahead and read what I have. "My proposal is simple. Stop all camping at the Bear River for the remainder of 2021 and for all of 2022 when the lease for the property expires. Maintain day-use access throughout the park over a phased reintroduction period. Use California Land Management contract staff to provide daily maintenance and supervision. Have the Placer County Sheriff commit to patrolling the park every night at closing time to ensure no illegal habitation occurs. Budget the funding or pursue the State Fish and Wildlife Group Department to fund the remaining critical fire management that all involved parties know is far past due being completed. Establish a citizen-led commission to define the future vision for the Bear River Park. It's a recreational jewel. It's amazingly underutilized. It's been horribly managed. This is not about blame. This is about looking forward. The best place to lead from is out front. Please get there and please lead, because the next time this happens, if it's on a bad day and everybody dies and this thing goes to 100,000 acres, that's a huge problem. And the county has liability in this, and I think you all know that, because you knew the risk at the campground and you let it continue. So thank you. Thank you. Let's go forward and do the right thing."
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. For the record, could we have your name?
Jordan Perry.
Thank you.
Good morning. Salam. I just wanted to give my personal commendation and thanks to the chief and sheriff for their effort and their work. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Kathleen, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I would like to comment thanking both CAL FIRE, our County Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Office for their expert coordination and work through our OES office in order to really manage a situation that could have easily gotten far out of control. It's always good to do an after-action report, which I'm sure they are going to be doing, to look for ways that we can improve in the future. But I think that we cannot underestimate how much the skill, training, and professionalism of those departments worked to make sure that our community was safe, that lives were saved, and property loss was as minimal as possible, which is not to say that every home that was destroyed is a tragedy, but it could have easily been several hundred more if this fire had gotten out of control. So I really appreciate, and as a member of the public, I wanted to comment on that so that they understand that the public is very much in support of the work that they're doing and how they protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Stitching it for the record, please.
Well, good morning, everyone, or good afternoon. First off, my name is Richard Malali, and I do live in Colfax. And I saw personally the plumes that were going up probably about maybe three or four miles from my house. Fortunately, I did not have to evacuate, but I was ready to go. And one of the things that I had was that we were, I believe, on an evacuation warning, but my wife was down here in Auburns. She was trying to get home, but we had our exit closed to our house. We live right off the freeway. We were on the west side, so we were not required to evacuate. But yet, fortunately, there are certain ways to get around some of these roadblocks that we do have in our area, and she managed to make it home. But what I'd like to say again is thank you to the chief and to our sheriff for all their intensive efforts to control this fire. And I understand it could have been worse, but what I'd really like to congratulate them on is on, two days ago, we had a 90-year-old elderly gentleman who regularly walks from 174, where it turns to go to Grass Valley, all the way down to the railroad bridge. He was missing for about five hours. And thanks to not only the sheriff's department, but some of the CAL FIRE and Colfax Volunteer Department, with everything else going on, they found him, which is amazing. 90 years old. His name is Skip. He ended up in Alta, or actually Dutch Flat. And with the efforts of the Placer County sheriffs, I want to say again, thank you very much for your assistance and getting Skip back home to his loved ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more comments. Appreciate it again. Thanks again. Good luck, you guys. I know you've got stuff to do, so thank you. And? Yep. We'll now take up our next department item, which is Treasure Tax Collector Riola Vineyard Community Facilities District.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Janine, that's much better. We can actually hear you.
Good. I apologize for the technical problems. I tested them, but for some reason, on live, it didn't work well. So, and thank you to Hillary Courtney for assisting me and Megan as well. Today before you, you're being requested to adopt a resolution approving the annexation of property and approving and ordering and directing other related matters for Community Facilities District Number 2017-1 Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. I'd like to mention that the property owner, Clifton Taylor of Gen 8 California, is available on the Zoom call, and upon request, Chris Lynch from Jones Hall, the bond counsel, is also available. The Riola Vineyard Specific Plan was originally approved in 2019 and amended in 2015 by your board to allow for development of up to 933 residential units, as well as other land uses such as commercial, open space, and recreational facilities. The specific plan area is 525 acres, and part of that is the Mason Trails subdivision, and that is comprised of a single parcel in the eastern portion of the specific plan area. The board has also approved the vesting tentative subdivision map for 170 low-density residential lots and a development agreement back in January of this year for the Mason Trails subdivision. On October 24 in 2017, your board adopted two resolutions related to the formation of Placer County Community Facilities District Number 2017-1 for the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. Community facilities districts are established in order to provide funding for services and facilities, and that was indeed the case here, where both services were included in that CFD and facilities component. The services go to, a special tax is placed on the property above and beyond the regular property taxes at the request of the property owner and the county through their development agreement to pay for services within that community facilities district. In the facilities portion, the special tax is raised in order to pay for debt service on bonds that are issued in order to provide for infrastructure within the district. In the case of this district, it would provide roadway and transportation improvements, recycled water system improvements, drainage system, wastewater, parks, trails, landscaping, and open space improvements. It also can pay, go to pay for fees that the county levies for certain, to fund certain facilities, and then services, as I mentioned, and then administrative and incidental expenses incurred in administering the district. So the, one of the resolutions approved back in 2017 provided for future annexation with, of parcels to be annexed into the CFD that are a part of the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan area. And that was, is subject to a unanimous approval for annexation and a landowner voter ballot to be executed by the property owner. We have received that from Gen 8, the property owner, and there was an additional resolution, 2017-202, that authorized the bonds that would be issued to pay for the infrastructure. The, in your board packet is the unanimous approval for annexation and landowner voter ballot executed by Gen 8, along with exhibits that- ballot executed by Gen 8, along with exhibits that include identification of the property, and that is the parcel number stated in both the board memo and in Exhibit A, a description of the facilities, which I summarized, the rate and method of apportionment of the special tax for improvement area number two, which is the area to be annexed. So that specifically describes the amount of taxes that will be placed for each of the resulting parcels, and then a consolidated boundary map for the CFD reflecting the improvement areas. There is no fiscal impact to the county related to the annexation of these properties in terms of the facilities. Of course, the fees go to support county services in that area, but as it relates to the facilities, that is derived from the special tax placed on the property. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you have about the annexation, and again, the property owner is available as well, and bond counsel can be made available if necessary.
Thanks, Janine. Any questions by board members? See none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? See none. We'll bring the resolution back to the board for consideration.
I'll move approval of the item.
Motion Gore, second. Jones, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next department-
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Our next department item is the former Titan 1A missile site in Lincoln. Karen, you're gonna-
Good afternoon, everyone, again. I'm Karen Belay from Real Estate Services, and we're here requesting that the board adopt a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement of easements with the city of Lincoln granting road right, right-of-way easements to extend and improve the Oak Tree Lane over county property, quitclaim the county interest in the Oak Tree Lane parcel, and authorize the director of facilities management or designee to take all necessary actions to implement the agreement. So, brief history is that the county acquired the 46-acre former Titan 1A missile site and the Oak Tree Lane parcel from the U.S. Department of Defense in 1968. Historically, it was used as a gun range and a corporation yard, but its use has been strictly a corporation yard today. In 2013, the city of Lincoln approved the Village One Specific Plan and the Village One Development Plan for the 1,832 acres of land, vacant land directly east of our site, of the missile site. And the right-of-way easements that are being sold through this purchase and sale agreement are needed to serve that Village One Development. In 2016, your board approved the Minor Land Division Parcel Map that created the three parcels, that created three parcels from the 46 acres, and the three parcels were a 10.5-acre mixed-use parcel, a 31.5-acre park property, and a four-acre corporation yard. And that division allows the county flexibility in divesting portions of that site. And the city may purchase, the city of Lincoln may purchase the park property in the future, and if that's the case, we will be back with another purchase and sale agreement for that at that time. Also, the county intends to convey, as to the Oak Tree Lane parcel, the county intends to convey its interest in the Oak Tree Lane parcel. The city of Lincoln has right-of-way interest, right-of-way interest in this, the parcel, but the county has the underlying fee, so the county is going to remove itself from title and convey that property to the city of Lincoln for no additional consideration. And that's part of this purchase and sale agreement. And for the city's funding of this purchase, the City Village One Infrastructure and Financing Plan will provide the funds for the city to purchase the easements. Once those funds are available to the city, the county will proceed with the sale, and it will move to grant the easements to the city. Incidentally, in 2017, you may recall, we were before your board at that time with a purchase and sale agreement for the easements, and we actually included the park parcel on that, bless you, the park parcel at that time, but that agreement expired by its own terms in September of 2020. But with the Village One Development continuing, continuing to need these easements, we've renegotiated this, and these are materially same or similar terms, largely just the park parcel's been left off out of this agreement. So the terms of the agreement are, these are just the key terms. The purchase price is going to be $107,796, and that's based on 92 cents per square foot as determined by a 2016 appraisal by Severs, Jordan, and Ziegemeyer. The, they found that it was 109,561 square feet of easements, but this purchase and sale agreement does allow adjustments to the purchase price based on the final site development plan and the legal description in the plat map. So if it's changed, if it's more or less, we'll be able to adjust that price. The term of the agreement is for two years from the date of execution of the agreement. The quitclaim of the fee interest in the Oak Tree Lane will take place all at once, and this agreement is, either party may terminate the agreement if the conditions to close the sale are not met, and either party may extend this agreement. And there's no time limit is what we would extend. It would be by mutual agreement, written agreement. And just so the board is aware, the city of Lincoln is taking this to their city council tonight for presentation, for approval. So the environmental conditions on this is that the city approved the Village One Specific Plan and certified the Village One EIR, which analyzed project-specific and cumulative physical impacts of infrastructure construction within the plan area. The proposed agreement would not result in new significant impacts or increase the severity of impacts identified in the Village One EIR. The fiscal portion of this is that the proceeds of the sale will be deposited into the fiscal year 2122 Capital Fund Lincoln-led remediation, and the cost to prepare and implement this agreement are found in the Real Estate Services Division Fiscal Year 2122 Adopted Budget. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Bonnie.
Thank you. I just have a quick question since this, and that is, with the three parcels, parcel three is the courtyard. It's in, you anticipate the county will keep that, that courtyard?
That is correct.
And then the city may purchase parcel two for a park?
Correct.
And then parcel one then could be developed at some point by the county unless somebody else chose to buy it and annex it into the city?
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I see no other. Anyone from the public wish to address this item? With that, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval of the item.
Motion Gore, second. Holmes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is a roll call. I knew that. I was testing to see whether or not Karen was awake still. Could we have a roll call, please? Sorry.
Gore.
Aye.
Holmes.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Again.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next item is the Placer Vineyards Park and Rec District, selection of officers-
You have to adjourn.
You need to adjourn.
Yes, thank you. But before we do that, I need to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation District. Andy.
Thank you. Andy Fisher, Parks and Open Space. I would address you as Mr. Chair, but we haven't established that yet, so I will address you all. Congratulations in your new role as the new board of the Parks and, or the Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation District. I'd like to begin by giving a brief, briefing on the nature of the district itself and then ask you to take the first couple of actions to get the district on its way and moving. The Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation District will serve the Placer Vineyards Development. As you know, one of the, the largest development approved within Placer County, ultimately serve 14,000 new homes and 33,000 residents, roughly. In March, on March 24th of 2020, your Board of Supervisors approved the application to the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, to form a new recreation and park district to serve the, the needs of the urbanized development areas in West Placer, beginning with Placer Vineyards. LAFCO took those actions, and on July 1st, just last month of 2021, filed a notice of completion that began the new life of the Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation District. It is its own government agency. It's not just a funding district like some of the zones of benefit and things that we talk about. It's organized the same way as our own Auburn Recreation District here that serves Auburn and Meadow Vista, organized under the Public Resources Code. With the one difference between us and the Auburn Recreation District in that your board, in the initial years of operation of the Placer Vineyards District, will serve as the Board of Directors until such time as there's a representative population out in West Placer served by this district, and they can then determine to have their own elections and elect folks out of their own residency. But those are the two options. It's either the Board of Supervisors, or it's residents of the district. So, being that there aren't enough residents there now, your board has stepped up to serve that role to begin with. Placer Vineyards at Build Out will have 159 acres of active parks, including 18 neighborhood parks, two community parks. There'll be a community center and anticipated joint use operations with the school district out there, Central, including a pool and a gymnasium. Those will grow up to have their own recreation programming to go with those facilities. The district will maintain over 800 acres of open space, a 30-mile trail system, and over 80 acres of landscape along the arterial roadways within Placer Vineyards. And I want to note that those are not just ambitious ideas. There's been already a great deal of foundational work done to ensure the success of this district, including all of the funding mechanisms set up for both development and for operational funding through the district. Those come through fee programs for development, a neighborhood park fee that's reimbursable to developers that provide turnkey parks for us, and a community park fee that will assemble funding eventually for the larger community parks and community centers that will be built by the district itself. There's also a services community facility district that is a property tax-based tax that will pay for maintenance, operation, administration of this district. So all of that is in place. It will all, the, the development agreement for Placer Vineyards lays out the pace of delivery so that as those funds increase, the inventory and the programming for those parks and amenities increases with it. So it's programmed, pre-programmed with a delivery pace, along with the, with the increase in residential development out there. One of the things that'll happen within the next year by statute is that LAFCO will take up a decision on the sphere of influence of this district. So whether it stays contained to Placer Vineyards, or if there is a will for this to expand further out in the West Placer area to eventually be able to annex and serve other developments out there, I will note that the, the level of service and the funding mechanisms that were adopted for Placer Vineyards are also adopted for the other major developments, Riola Vineyards, Placer Ranch, Regional University. So all of those are going to be consistently developed with the same level of service and the same proportional funding mechanisms that come with them. So that, that'll be a consideration within this first year. LAFCO will consult your board on the sphere of influence question. We will be returning to your board within the next couple of months on some follow-up items. I think the next one you may see is a funding pass-through agreement from these funding mechanisms that are collected by the county and will continue to be collected by the county, but then passed through to the district, so that'll come with an agreement. We're also working on the budget for the new district, so we're making sure that we have all of the funds, the cost centers, so that each of, all of these funds coming in are held in trust in the right place for the right purpose. We're getting that all dialed in and put together. We'll bring that before the board shortly. And then also an agreement, probably in the not-too-distant future, on the, the use of county staff to support the district as we go forward as well. But for today, the actions before you are to elect your first chair and vice chair, and also the clerk of, appoint the clerk of the Board of Directors. We made the recommendation that the chair of the Board of Supervisors also serve and vice chair serve concurrently as the chair and vice chair of the district, and that was purely a practical recommendation because the, it's anticipated that the business of the district will be conducted just like this during normal board sessions, and so that would just avoid having to pass gavel and things like that. But it's purely up to you. That was just a practical recommendation. So with that, I will turn it back to the Board of Directors of the Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation District to take action.
Thanks, Andy. And just to be clear, that means, of course, that as our chair and vice chair positions here rotate, so they would rotate on the district, and we thought that would be best administratively.
Okay.
Yeah. So, any questions, comments by board members, or district members? Anyone from the public? With that, what is the pleasure of the board? Bonnie.
Well, I am more than happy at any time to allow the chair and vice chair to take on additional work, especially when I'm not one of them. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Motion Gore, second. Holmes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. We will now adjourn as the Placer Vineyards Parks and Recreation District and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and take up Public Works Item, which is Hill-Ficker Wall Evaluation Forest Hill Road Project.
All right. I'm Kyle Friedrich, and I'm here today as the engineer assigned to this Hill-Ficker Wall Evaluation on Forest Hill Road Project. My request of you today is to approve the base bid award for competitive bid number 20196, and award construction contract number 993 to A. Tykert &amp; Son, Inc. of California, or Rosewood, California, for the construction of the Hill-Ficker Wall Evaluation Forest Hill Road Project in the amount of $1,281,711, subject to risk management and county council concurrence, and authorize the director of Public Works or designee to execute changes to the contract up to $76,586, consistent with Public Contract Code Section 20142 and the County Procurement Policy Manual. So, back in 2017, the county noticed some mooncracking occurring on Forest Hill Road adjacent to a retaining wall, and as you can imagine, we had concerns about potentially the wall sliding down the hill and/or tipping, and so we reached out to a consultant, Crawford and Associates, and they analyzed the wall and determined it to be sound. They did identify that the settling that we were visually seeing is a result of poor construction practices. It's an old logging road, and over time, the compaction requirements at the time just wasn't enough, and so it's been slowly, slowly settling. So Crawford made a recommendation, which the county concurs with, which is to overX out the road, put in a thicker section with GeoGrid underneath, so that way if there is any settling that is occurring, that GeoGrid will bridge it, so we won't see any depressions in our road in the future. So, with that, we put a bid package together and worked with procurement, advertised and got two bidders. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder was Tykert, and we recommend that we proceed with them. The construction for the project is expected to be staged. The road will not be closed. It'll be at a significantly reduced speed, but it will be open for the duration of the project. The project is funded with regional surface transportation funds, as well as local funds, and will be, total project cost around $2 million. So, with that, I'd like to open up with any questions.
Bonnie.
Quick question. How big or how long is that section of road?
Sure. So the, the direct area that we're concerned with is about 350 feet, but in order to correct for the settlement over the, the last few years, our limits are about 1,200 feet total.
Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? I see none. Anyone from the public? Motion Gustafson, second. Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next department item is County Execs Office Amendment to the Code Adding Cable Television and Video Services. Todd, or?
Doug Jastro.
Doug.
Hi. Good afternoon. Doug Jastro, Revenue Services Manager with the County Executive Office. So, as stated in the board memo, the action being requested today is to introduce and waive oral reading of an ordinance amending Placer Code Chapter 13 to add Article 13.45, Cable Television and Video Services. The Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act, or DIVCA, authorizes local entities such as Placer County with the ability to enforce customer service standards for cable and internet service providers within the county. These customer service standards include, but are not limited to, service repair and obligation, or service and repair obligations, call center and response time requirements, along with complaint and billing dispute resolution procedures. In order to effectively enforce these customer service standards, a joint effort by the County Executive Office, County Council, Information Technology, and Telecom worked to put forward this requested amendment to the Placer County Code. If approved, the Revenue Services Division- that collects the franchise fees from cable television and internet service providers will administer customer complaints on unresolved material breaches of customer service standards. Revenue Services is well positioned to administer these unresolved complaints by providing written notice to service providers on verified complaints, issue financial penalties for material breaches not remedied within 30 days, and to conduct efforts to collect and impose Again, our action today is to establish a formal enforcement mechanism to address service and infrastructure concerns with cable and internet service providers. And amending the county code to include the specifics conferred upon Placer County by DIVCA, the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act, will allow us to do just that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Doug. Cindy?
I have questions.
Absolutely.
The 30-day, so we give them a notice that there's a material breach, which we could issue today for at least one of the providers. And then they have 30 days to cure. And then we can start fining if they haven't. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's a long period of time, given our track record, right? And that, and that is frustrating to me when people don't have service. So, but it can be done for each individual who experiences a loss, each customer. I'm looking back at Dieter too, because I know he and Karen and Doug. That's a yes. So if customer A complains and has, and we feel there's an issue, customer B next door complains, then we have, or down the block, or 10 miles away. So we could file multiple fines against the company for each individual customer.
That's correct. For each verified complaint.
Because otherwise, $500 isn't anything to these guys, right?
Yeah, for each verified complaint.
Yeah.
And like I said-
And that's the first time. And then the second time, you wait another 30 days and you can go to the 1,000, and then you can go to the 2,500? Okay.
Correct, correct. And Revenue Services, with our current enforcement platform that we have, usually for, for other collections within the county, we're well positioned to handle those multiple complaints if necessary.
Great. I appreciate that. As you all know, there's just so many customers that have been so frustrated with the poor performance and responses, just not even getting repairs done to, for services they're paying well over 100 a month for to one of the providers. So, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? See none. Anyone from the public? With that, pleasure-
I'll move approval.
One second.
Motion, Gustafson, second. Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I want to thank all the staff that worked on this. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
So the board will now adjourn to closed session.
We have public.
Public comment.
Public comment. We said they could wait till-
I was told that we were going to do public comment after we return from closed session.
You can do it now.
I can do it. Okay, with that, I'll, I will do it now. We continued public comment from this morning. So if there is anyone here or in Zoom who would like to address the board on something that is not on the agenda, we will take that up now.
Don't be bashful.
Yes, respect to COVID. More concerns with it. Lockdown last year and threat of another lockdown.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record, please?
Lee Pryor.
Thanks.
Just would encourage the board to be skeptical of the science claims that we need to lock down again. Just encourage the board to be mindful of the impact on humanity of locking down. And at schools, the impact to children's education as they have to mask, should it be a mandate again? I think it's highly distracting education. I personally interpret this whole COVID thing as sort of a backdoor invasion from a hostile nation. I think the Chi, the Communist Chinese. I think their way of governance is highly, highly foreign, foreign, as well as alien and offensive to our form of government, our character as a nation, our history. There's lots of ways that Communist mentalities and thinking, thinking and ways of doing things, I think, is being backdoored to the American Yeah, I could go on at length, but I think it suffices to say. I just ask you all, each and every one of you to take seriously. I understand that if you're a victim of COVID, if indeed, you know, and I do believe it's a real thing. I think it was invented, in fact, in laboratory work, highly questionable as to the integrity of the scientific, so-called scientific experiments done on apparently a, a animal virus. How this released was released to the public? I think we should, as a nation, I wish our leadership from the president and others, I wish we were more inquisitive. How did this happen? How was it developed? I'll stop there. But thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thanks for waiting.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I have been coming now for several months observing what happens in here. It's pretty fascinating. You guys do a lot of really good work for the community here. And I do appreciate what you're doing. I really appreciate Suzanne today really kind of stepping up for those who are new here to try to help understand some differences in terms that you guys probably understand that we don't understand, sitting out here in the audience, I guess we could call it. One thing I have observed that has kind of bothered me is that many people have come up here saying they've asked what the PCR threshold is, and they've been asking for months stating that the health director hasn't gotten back to them through emails or any other ways of communication. So I would like to request, since earlier you said to email you with questions, could you possibly just call and find out what our PCR thresholds are, and if they're different for vaccinated versus unvaccinated people? And maybe just report that out to the next meeting? Because it seems like a lot of people have had that question for several months now, and it's not getting answered. Also, I would just like to know, too, there are some documents on the CDC website asking or stating that, I think they're called green areas, that people who are at high risk will be taken from their homes and placed somewhere else. And I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but it is on the CDC website. And I'd like to know what you guys will do to protect citizens here from us being taken from our home, especially if they're using a test that may be outdated to do that, like the PCR test, which is on the website as well from the CDC, and how you're going to protect the citizens here from that. And I'll take any comments. If I can sit down or stand here, it doesn't matter.
Well, thanks. But if I could just make sure I-
Sure.
-told you correctly. And I, so I'll find out and I'll announce it next time we meet together.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
But I'll also get it out on social media. I'll get it up on our webpage or something that, we'll figure out a way that, so if you look on our webpage, I think you'll get an answer. But so the, the question is, what is the PCR threshold, and does that differ with people who have been vaccinated versus people who have not?
Yeah, because there's lots of rumors going around. And I think that would be just a really nice thing to have up, to say, this is where we stand in Placer County to help some confusion go away. Because a lot of people are afraid and misinformed. There is a lot of misinformation from the truth side and from the misinformation side. And I think it would be really nice to see some clear-cut information that's posted for people to go to, so people aren't coming to these meetings revved up because they can't get the information, which should be supplied to us, I think.
Yeah, but I, but I, I have, I do have to say that some of them have gotten answers because they've gotten them from me personally, and they don't like my answers, which is different than not getting answers in the first. We're very receptive to the, to the fact of getting information out. But so, but-
I agree with you. I do.
Another thing I, for you and the public, periodically, Dr. Rob Oldman, who is our Public Health Director and also the Director of Health and Human Services, does come here, usually by Zoom. But he's here to not only give an update, he did it in our last meeting, I believe, two weeks ago. And then he's available for questions also. So we always open up those things to public comment. And the protocol here is if the public during that process asks specific questions, we'll either wait until the very end and then ask Rob to comment. I'm happy to do that. And/or sometimes he can answer those questions directly. So we, I think, have had a strong commitment through this whole process of trying to make sure we got good information out. A lot of us on the board were similarly troubled by mixed communication and lack of good information. And we all have our individual personal positions. And I think we all also did a very good job of articulating what we individually would support or not. But appreciate taking the time to make your comments and hanging around for so long. But I'll get that information out to you as quickly as possible. If you want me to give you, if you give me your email, I'll, I'll send it out immediately. But, but just so you know, as we go forward, because it obviously appears to be a circumstance that COVID does not look like it's going to disappear tomorrow. None of us know what kind of state and/or federal policy will result from it. At the local level specifically, we have public health authority generally when there is no state authority, but we don't have the authority to supersede that. So your points are all very well taken, both of you. And, and, you know, we've been dealing with this now for months, and I don't expect it to go away soon. So.
I agree. And I do thank you guys for what you do. But there's going to be more and more new people coming in to these meetings. And I think if there's just like something where you guys can say, this is where we've covered that, this is right here on this webpage on this, I think that might be helpful for some of us that are struggling and trying to catch up.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So now we will adjourn to closed session unless somebody zoomed in, Megan, for public comment to finish up our public comment. So with that, we'll finish up that public comment section. And Karen?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items of labor negotiations.
Thanks. Thanks.
The board has returned from closed session and county council will report out.
The board meant in closed session to consider two items of labor negotiations. On the first item, labor negotiations with DSA, the board heard a report and provided direction. On the second item, the negotiations with PC Lima, the board heard a report and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, and that concludes our business of the day, so the board is adjourned.